Okay.
Whenever it says it began, you have the script where it'll say, we will have however many minutes, you can just sort that.
Okay.
I'll do this right here.
Yes, ma'am. Do you want? Yes.
C-12, questions in the house. So as soon as this is, if anybody asks them, they can go home.
Okay.
And he's gonna stay for the public works.
Calling the meeting in order, City Council meeting of May 21st, 2025. While this meeting is being broadcast via Zoom, oral public comment may only be provided live at the City Council meeting in person. The City Council meeting is available for instant translation in over 50 languages with wordly, accessible via your mobile phones, computer, and video displays by scanning the QR code located on the title page of the agenda in the upper right corner. Let us now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and can I ask one of our colleagues to...
Sorry, Vice Mayor, we need a roll call.
Oh, roll call. I'm too excited for this meeting. A roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Barbadeo.
Present.
Councilmember Chua.
Here.
Councilmember Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Leanne.
Here.
And Mayor Montana is absent.
All right, let us please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and may I please request one of the council members to lead it.
That's allegiance to the flag, to United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Leanne will give us a beautiful invocation tonight.
Thank you. We ask for your direction, God, as we make some important decisions in our meetings. Help us to thoroughly and exhaustively review the information that has been presented to us, teach us to debate vigorously but constructively, guide us to weigh the strength and weakness of our choice in the best interest of the people of Milpitas, not in our personal preference, keep us united in our decision-making process regardless of our differences. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Let's now go to our presentations. Tonight, we have four presentations, the Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, Public Works Week, National Police Week, and Employee Recognition. Can we please go down the lectern and present these proclamations? Presentations. Thank you. The first presentation is for the Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. May is Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, a time for our community to honor the generations of AANHPI residents who have shaped the history, culture, and achievements of our city and our country. From early pioneers to today's leaders, the contributions of AANHPI individuals continue to enrich Milpitas in countless ways. Tonight, we recognize the AANHPI community for their lasting impact and invite everyone to learn about their diverse histories and traditions. Join us, the Milpita City Council, in proclaiming May of 2025 as the Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And I ask who would receive the proclamation on behalf of the AANHPI.
There's no recipient.
There's no recipient. All right, so we'll keep this on our books and let's remember, May of 2025 is the AANHI month. Secondly, we recognize our public works. The National Public Works Week, this week, we celebrate National Public Works Week and recognize the vital role that public works professionals play in our daily lives. The 2025 theme, People, Purpose, and Presence, reminds us of the dedicated individuals who serve our community with purpose and commitment, ensuring that essential infrastructure and services operate reliably every day. Join us again in proclaiming National Public Works Week in the city of Milpitas.
Can I invite, can I invite to move?
Yes.
Picture time, please.
This time, move.
We have Howard, too.
Oh, Howard.
All right.
Howard.
Now there's a security.
More security.
Yes, please.
Good evening. Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm your humble Public Works Director for the city, and it's my distinct privilege to recognize and honor the professional and dedicated women and men who make daily contributions to public works-related efforts and include designing, planning, operating, and improving the city's infrastructure. On that note, since I have an audience, I'd like to take a second to apprise you of some projects that we will be breaking ground on this spring and summer, which may affect some of you depending on where you live. Soon, we will be replacing seven scoreboards at Cardoza Park, Dixon Landing Park, and the Sports Center. We will also be investing about $5.5 million to replace an aged 12-inch water line on Dempsey Road that will be followed by a brand-new road in the summer of 2026. We will be constructing a new well, water well, at Delano Manon's Park to diversify our water portfolio. We will be replacing, finally, the two elevator cabs at the library around September, October. We will be also investing $3 million to preserve the following roadways. East Calaveras Boulevard from I-680 to Evans Road, North Park Victoria from Jacklin Road to East Calaveras Boulevard, North and South Side Streets adjacent to Mount Shasta Avenue, including Cortland Court and Avenue, among other adjacent streets. In addition to all this, we will also be resurfacing Beacon Drive, Canton Drive from Roswell Drive, and Bixie Drive, Lawton Drive, Sepulveda Court, and resurfacing of the asphalt pathway at Strick Roth Park. And finally, later this summer, early fall, we will be letting out a proposal to hopefully award and improve the median of Calaveras from City Hall to 680, and concluding the design efforts so that we can improve the Senate Park playgrounds early next year. So thank you for your attention. Again, if you have any questions or you wish to speak to me about anything, please invite you to call our hotline at 586-2600. Thank you very much.
Call them. The next one is at the National Police Week. This week, the city of Milpitas observes National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day to honor the service and sacrifices of law enforcement officers who protect our freedom and ensure public safety in our city. We are grateful to the Milpitas Police Department for their unwavering dedication, integrity, and bravery, and take this time to remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. Join us, the City Council, in proclaiming National Police Week in the city of Milpitas. And we invite Chief Jared.
Thank you, sir.
Hi there, my name is Dave Morris. I'm the Traffic Sergeant for the city of Milpitas, and I'm our oldest member of the Department Honor Guard. Thank you, City Council, for this recognition, and Chief as well. Really appreciate it. Just a little bit about what Police Week is. Every year, in Washington, DC, in May, they honor the officers that were killed in the line of duty from the previous year. This year, they added 345 names to the memorial in Washington, DC. I've been to too many police funerals in my 25-plus-year career here to keep track of them all, and they're always amazing to see the camaraderie and officers that come to pay respects for someone that does the same job that they've never met before, just to show the support and love that they have for their department and for their family. As amazing as that is, every time that I've gone to a police funeral, the sheer numbers of police and family members and coworkers that are at National Police Week in Washington, DC, is amazing. It'll be an experience I never forget. Instead of just a few thousand, we're talking tens of thousands. And the gravity of how much it means to the family members, the brothers, the sisters, the parents, the grandparents, and the children of these fallen officers that appreciate our showing up, giving our honor and respect to these people is something that'll last with me forever. So thank you for allowing the time for the team to go from the Honor Guard to pay our respects. We'll never forget it, it was an amazing experience. So thank you for the proclamation, it's appreciated.
Appreciate the opportunity to say something. Honestly, there's not anything else that I can say any better than Sergeant Morris just did. What I will do is give a shout-out to our Honor Guard team who traveled to Washington on their own dime. They paid their way and went there representing the city of Milpitas, and they stood guard over the memorials in two separate events. And I think it just shows the tremendous dedication that they have to the profession and honoring those that weren't as fortunate as some of the rest of us that actually get to retire. The last thing that I will say is the tremendous support that we get from our council and from our community really drives us to serve you guys in the most excellent way that we possibly feel like we can. And so I hope that the day never comes for our community to have to support each other because of the loss of an officer in the line of duty. I definitely appreciate all the support that we have even without such a monumental impact to communities, so thank you all very much.
I'm getting used to this. We are recognizing our employees, right, for their dedicated service, their longevity. You know, Milpitas is not, Milpitas is today without them. Our drive is to maintain a good working environment so that our employees and staff remains, because I believe that longevity means loving your work, and when you love your work, it gives positive results. So we are recognizing a number, and Kelly will read the names.
Thank you. We have folks here, many who are not, and we're just going to recognize the folks who have five, 10, 15, 20, and are 25-year employees. We're going to actually give their certificates here, the rest of the folks will give those in the back. After the five-year folks come up and the 10-year, the 15, the 20, and the 25 will take a picture, and then the next group will come down. So you all get the opportunity to listen to me, potentially mispronounce names, I'm excited for that. My apologies in advance for any employees who I do that, too. So for five years, we have Alberta Juarez, Bill Tott, Bradley Seliga, Brandon Doherty, Brian Chu, Cindy Chow, Daniel F. Fantino, Emma Nar, Frank Perkins, Glenn Wong, Heinz Schuberkuh, Howard Salamanca. Howard, I saw you here, please come on down, please come on down. Jessica Wetzke, Jesus Valencia, Joel Gozen, Kenny Huang, Leslie Sauceda, Marlo Moore II, Melanie Goodman, Michael Yamashita, Nathaniel Wooten, Nicholas Tran, Oleg... Ready for this one? Kolomanovsky, Paul Rabino, Ryan Ostrow... Kolomanovsky, Paul Rabino, Ryan Ostrow, Salvador Perez, Samir Paracha, Taylor Goodes, Tegan McLean, Tony, Anne Estelano. That's a lot of people for five years for you to represent for us here, so thank you. It's a lot of responsibility, and we appreciate you doing that. I would ask, could I get a volunteer to come down and also be a public information officer for me and take a picture? Awesome. Samu, I appreciate it.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Do you want to hang out and do the next group? Thank you. Yes. You can go. You can go. We'll get the next one. Yeah, we're going to head to 10 years. Really appreciate it. So, we have one, two, three, four, five, six folks for 10 years. That's an amazing contribution. I appreciate you all recognizing them. Amanda Gomez, Isaac Su, Jonathan Nichols, Justin Yont, Carolie Toth, Michelle Sanchez. Awesome. Give them a round of applause. 15 years. Eliza Nunez, Eric Amath, Gregory Jimenez, Martin Lum, Tyler Jamison. Yay. 20. We have three folks: David Peterson, Mario Blackwell, and Wakar Koreshi. Okay. 25 years, and I know there are some folks here, so get ready. 25 years. Daniel Nam. Daniel? Dave Morris, I saw you. Galahad Zamora. Do y'all want to hang out here? Jared Hernandez. Life Julison? Life's not here. And did I say life correctly? Thank you for the coaching on that. Appreciate it. Lisa Mendez. Roberto Poyio and Sunny Gallegos. Okay. Ready for another picture? Thank you, Samu. Yep. Beautiful. Thank you so much. Oh, yes. Galahad, thank you for bringing the photographer.
Now, let's move to a public forum. Members of the public are invited to speak on any item that does not appear on today's agenda. Please note that oral public comment may only be provided live at the City Council meeting in person. Public forum will be limited to three minutes for now. Okay. I'll take that back. As much as we want to hear from everyone and give the opportunity, we'll limit public forum for a minute.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Barbara DiO. So, Matt Cano, Assistant City Manager. So, City Clerk Guzzetta is remote today, and so she is serving as the official city clerk for this meeting, but I am supporting her with the speaker cards and the timing and a few other items. And so, I'll be calling the public speakers for this item. And just as a reminder, if you're here to speak on one of the items on the agenda, such as a pickleball tennis, that needs to be done during that agenda item. So, the first public speaker for the public forum is Voltaire Montemayor.
Vice Mayor, Mayor, members of the City Council, will come back from the trip, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr.
City Attorney, City Manager, Staff, Assistant Manager. Anyway, oh, it's hard to be a starter. So, it's not new to me, because I always say, like, follow-up on the presentations, like, congratulations. I'm one of the AANSP Islander heritage. I am from the Philippines, like the mayor. And Public Works people, you're the backbone of us, National Police Week. Thank you for being very good immediate responders and employee recognitions. Congratulations. You're the backbone of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor.
Our next public speaker, Henry Soong, or if you're here for, I think you might be here for item 14 as well, for pickleball. So, this is a public forum. If you're here to talk about pickleball or tennis, you'll wait till item 14 on the agenda.
Yeah, I know. I'm just, my question is, what did we agree on for the...
We're one minute.
One minute. Okay. Okay, thanks, everyone, and I'm so glad that you, the council has proclaimed, you know, May as the National API Month. The one thing I want to offer, just a quick support, is for your housing commissioner, Teen Mai, who has gotten into a bit of an interpersonal dispute of sorts due to some of the verbiage that he had used in a recent Housing Commission meeting. And then that ended up with him penning an op-ed in the Milpitas Beat on May 1st. Just from my own personal impressions, I don't believe that Commissioner Mai meant anything malicious. So, I think that going forward, being a little bit more kinder and gentler and communicate with people is probably something that you can probably resolve behind closed doors. A question that surrounds fiscal responsibility should not devolve into personal accusations of racism or things like that, right? And I think people have different ways to engage and control their English language and speak in the way that's concise to them, and so that some tolerance and some latitude would be best for the community going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry.
And there's no other public speakers for this agenda item, Vice Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Now, moving on to the announcements of conflict of interest and campaign contributions, we have Acting City Attorney Quich.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I asked the Vice Mayor and each council member whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbara DiO.
None.
Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lam.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Thank you. I further ask the Vice Mayor and the members in the Milpitas City Council to please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received within the last 12 months from May the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda, or contributions received from the development project applicants for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbara DiO.
None.
Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lam.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Thank you. Let the record reflect no report conflicts. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Milpitas City Council Code of Conduct: Be respectful and courteous, model severity, avoid surprises, place publicly, and criticize privately. Focus on the issues, not the person. Refrain from using electronic devices while on the council dais. Disclose conflicts of interest and affiliation related to agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speak with one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. Council will hold one another accountable to comply with this code of conduct.
Thank you, Councilmember Lam. Now, moving on to the approval of agenda, as colleagues or staff, if you have any changes.
Seeing none, move to approve the agenda. Second.
All right. So, for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbara DiO.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lam.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
The next one would be the consent calendar. Any changes from staff or from the City Council?
No changes.
Seeing none, move to approve the consent calendar.
Sorry, we need public comment first for the consent calendar.
All right. I invite the public for any public comment on the consent calendar. Anybody?
Hi, Vice Mayor. I have no public comment cards for the consent calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Closing, public comment. Now, the vote.
Sorry, we have a motion by Councilmember Chua. We need a second.
With a motion by Councilmember Chua and a second by Councilmember Leanne, here comes the vote. Vice Mayor Barbara DiO.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lam.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
The vote passes.
Thank you. So, moving on to our public hearings, applicants and appellants and their representatives may be allotted up to about 10 minutes for opening statements and up to a total of five minutes maximum for their closing statements. Item number 13, City Manager.
Item number 13 is a resolution to deny a minor site development permit and zoning variance for a covered deck in the side yard setback at 860 Evans Road.
Right. Invite the staff for the presentation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and good evening, City Council members and members of the public. My name is Randy Baez, Associate Planner with the city of Milpitas. The item before you is a request to adopt a resolution to deny a minor site development permit and zoning variance for a covered deck in the side yard setback at 860 Evans Road. Next slide, please. The applicant is requesting a minor site development permit and a variance to construct a 1,082-square-foot attached accessory building for a covered deck on a .8-acre lot. The project also includes a variance request to deviate from one of the hillside development standards for side setbacks, which requires a minimum of 40 feet. Per the Milpitas Municipal Code, accessory buildings structurally attached to the main building are treated as part of the building in terms of development standards, including setbacks. Next slide, please. For some background on this property, the existing single-family home does not have any related planning entitlements, as it was constructed before the Hillside Combining District was adopted in 1992. The city does not have the original building permits on file, but the oldest building permits show that the existing dwelling had been constructed since at least 1969. On October 15th of last year, the applicant filed a Minor Site Development Permit, or MSD, for initial staff review on the proposed hillside development project. After the first round of review of the application, staff determined that a variance request would be necessary in order to approve the covered deck in the proposed location. On February 13th of this year, the applicant applied for a variance permit to deviate from the hillside development standards for setbacks as established in the Milpitas Municipal Code. On April 9th of this year, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the application for the proposed variance and voted 4-1-1, with one commissioner absent and one abstaining vote recommending that the Milpitas City Council approve the variance Pursuant to the Municipal Code, the City Council shall have approval authority upon recommendation by the Planning Commission of any variance application relating to projects within the hillside. Although most MSD permits are processed at the staff level, the applications have been consolidated so that the final action on the project is made by the highest review authority. Next slide. The project is located on a .8-acre lot on Evans Road near the intersection of North Park Victoria Drive and Jaclyn Road. Next slide, please. The property and neighboring properties are zoned R1H, or Single Family Residential Hillside. Next slide, please. Here is the existing overall site plan on the left and the proposed site plan on the The image above shows the existing southwest elevation, and the bottom image shows the proposed elevation. This elevation is what would be most visible from the valley floor and for the public in general. The max height of the existing structure is approximately 14 feet, and the proposed patio cover is approximately 10 feet high, as shown in the blue or green line here. Here is a summary of the development standards. The project site is developed with a single-family residence and attached two-car garage. A significant portion of the existing structure is located within the required 40-foot side setback near the southern or southwestern property line, so any further encroachment would be considered an expansion of a non-conforming structure. Here is an enlarged view of the existing and proposed site plans. The existing side yard setbacks range from as much as 20 feet to as little as 11 feet to the existing sunroom, and as you can see on the right, the highlighted areas, the proposed attached structure. Next slide, please. A variance is defined as a type of permit that sanctions deviations from the adopted zoning ordinance related to physical development standards, such as lot size, building setbacks, and height limits. The Municipal Code states that in the R1, R2, and R1H districts, a legal non-conforming building or structure shall not be added to or enlarged in any manner unless the addition or enlargement conforms to all development standards and regulations, including yard setbacks. It is important to note that the justification for a variance must be based on physical characteristics of the site, including size, shape, topography, locations, or surroundings. Planning staff does not recommend approval because there is no evidence of special circumstances, and this would be an enlargement of a non-conforming structure. Staff believes the project does not meet all the MSD findings, particularly due to the proposed location of the covered deck, which is not deemed to be compatible with the neighboring homes within the Hillside Combining District. The subject property, along with nearby properties, has non-conforming side setbacks due to development before the city's Hillside Combining District regulations were enacted. While neighboring properties also have non-conforming setbacks, none have sought to expand into them. There are no unique conditions requiring the proposed accessory building to encroach into the setback. It could be relocated to comply with zoning standards. Approving the variance would grant the property an unfair advantage not available to others with the same zoning, rather than addressing a hardship. Furthermore, there are no special circumstances of the property that require this accessory building to be located in the proposed area and encroach into the side setback. Granting a variance for the proposed covered deck is not justified, as it would significantly encroach into the required 40-foot side setback, reducing it to just five feet. encroach into the required 40-foot side setback, reducing it to just five feet and be much closer to the property line than any nearby structures. The existing home already has a non-conforming 11-foot side setback. Alternative options, such as an uncovered deck or placing the covered deck elsewhere, could comply without a variance. The requested variance would allow a structure within the required side setback, which normally isn't permitted. Although the Planning Commission and city council can grant exceptions with conditions to avoid special privileges, this case involves expanding a non-conforming structure even further into the setback. Doing so would violate zoning regulations and unfairly grant the property a privilege not available to others. The proposed covered deck with existing non-conforming side setbacks. Nearby homes are within 100 to 200 feet, and further encroachment could negatively affect their privacy, light, and air. Approving the variance may also set a precedent for similar encroachments, leading to broader negative impacts in the neighborhoods. The project does not fully align with the general plan, particularly Policy CD 7-6 on Hillside Development, which emphasizes design that complements the natural hillside setting. The proposed 35-foot encroachment into the 40-foot side setback conflicts with this goal and is not considered compatible with surrounding single-family homes. Instead, the proposed accessory building could have been relocated elsewhere on the property in a manner that could meet all development standards of the Hillside Combining District. Far from depriving the subject property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity under identical zone classifications, the proposed variance would actually grant the property a special privilege by allowing an expansion of a non-conforming building not normally available to similar properties. Staff believes it would set a bad precedent to approve a variance for a non-conforming building, since that is not a special circumstance. Staff also identified potential alternatives that are on the next slide, and our complete findings can be found in both the staff report and the resolution. Next slide, please. In order to meet the setback requirements of the Hillside Combining District, it is not feasible to have an attached accessory building along the southwest side of the existing single-family residence. However, staff has provided alternatives for the applicant that may provide similar amenities, such as installing a deck without a roof. The uncovered deck would be considered an accessory structure instead of an accessory building, and would be subject to a three-foot side setback. Installing a detached patio cover, gazebo, or similar structure. This detached structure would also be subject to a three-foot side setback and would just have to adhere to a 12-foot height maximum, and that structure should be feasible at the rear half of the property. Installing an attached covered deck in a new location, it may be feasible to develop an attached covered deck along the northeast side of the residence, which would be on the exact opposite of the building, which currently has an existing side setback of approximately 68 feet. Furthermore, the applicant has not demonstrated that the alternatives are not feasible. Next slide, please. During the Planning Commission hearing in April, a few issues regarding the proposed variance were discussed, and this is a short breakdown for some of those issues, along with staff's response. For example, the size issue, the property is .8 acres in size, which is similar to many other properties in the immediate vicinity. The topography issue, the property is sloped on the right side but not in the rear, and slopes do not preclude the possibility of a covered deck. Inconvenience, inconvenience is not considered a special circumstance. There must be unique physical characteristics of the lot. And impact, although the current neighbors may not care, future neighbors may, so it would also have an impact citywide by establishing precedent. Next slide. The proposed project is categorically exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, in accordance with SEQA Guideline Section 15303 for new construction or conversions of small structures, and Section 15305 for minor alterations in land use limitations. A notice was published in the Milpitas Post, and a sign was placed near the property for the Planning Commission hearing. The planning department received one comment from the property owner directly to the south of the site in support of the project. Next slide. And similarly, a notice was published for tonight's city council public forum. A sign was also posted at the project site, and one comment was received by one of the nearby property owners, again, in support of the project. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution overturning the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve Minor Site Development Permit Number MS24-0257 and zoning variance number VA25-0001 for the property located at 860 Evans Road. And this concludes staff summary of the project. Myself and the applicant are here, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. If the applicant says similar presentation before we can have the presentation or comments. Welcome.
Good evening. Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to present our case for a variance. The reason we would like to have a variance because our land has been subdivided a long time ago, before the zoning on the Hillside Combining Zone was in existence. So, before the setback, the side setback was only five feet from the property line. So, the old house, the current house as it's been built right now, is built about maybe 10 feet from the property line, because half of our land alongside it is steep hill. So, the house has been, is built on the lopsided, very close to the property line, because we don't have any building path, buildable path on the other side, to take advantage of the .8-acre land that we have. So, now we want to expand, and the only good thing about the property is the view from that hill. So, if we build, like, the planning department suggested to build it on the opposite side of the house, we won't have a view to enjoy, so it doesn't make sense to build a deck there. If we build it in the back, separate, detached from the house, then it's not useful to us, because we won't get to use it every day. So, to spend that much money to not use it at all, maybe once or twice a year, then it's not an option for us. And if we build the deck without the roof, that part of the neighborhood is very sunny, very hot and windy, so.
If I may express that part, it is not, you know, the covered deck is actually what we're after, and it's not a matter of convenience, it's actually a necessity. We have lived there for over 20 years, almost actually 25 years, and we have used the deck very little, about three or four times a year, due to two factors. One is the constant intense western sun, and the other is the high wind up on the hill. So, we have placed umbrellas and things over the years, and we tried to bolt it down too, and you know that the sun move throughout the day, from high noon all the way to sunset. No matter how many umbrellas we use, there's always exposure, you cannot try to catch the sun all the time. And when, once you have the wind, and you notice high winds very often now, actually, our umbrellas got blown away and potentially could, you know, could damage our home, our roof, or even the properties of our neighbor downstairs as well, down below. And so, those are the two reasons why we think that we need a roof over the deck, that's for that reason. And in terms of inconvenience to our neighbors, the hill is steep, with about, I think, greater than 60 feet apart from the two properties, so the deck as it is right now.
Deep, steep hill side.
As a deck, it is right now, it, you know, it basically doesn't provide, doesn't impose or doesn't provide any, doesn't cause any kind of, you know, doesn't.
It's not an obstruction.
Obstruction, and doesn't impose any kind of privacy on the property below or any kind of, will not make it hard for the people down below us to enjoy their view or anything like that. And in fact, we got the support from the property owner downstairs, as well as upstairs, the people who can actually have a view of our deck, and they all say that, no, from our part, the hill is steep, so even if you have a roof or no roof, we can't see, it doesn't block anything, so it doesn't, it's not a matter to them, for the.
For the public.
For the people on the left and the right to us, they can hardly see our house, much less the duck, so for them, pretty much we can say that they do not care. So, that's the only neighbors that we have around us.
From the valley floor to the public, when they look up right now, and if we, even if we add the roof to the deck, the view doesn't change for them. There's no more obstruction than it is right now. So, it's not an inconvenience or anything that would bother the public at all if they look up. And also, if we adhere to the new setback rules, we would practically have a 20-feet-wide, over 200-feet-long buildable path, according to the new setback. So, that would just, you know, reduce the value and the enjoyment and the freedom of renovating or rebuilding of any kind on that piece of land. So, it's unfair for us to be subjected to the new 40-feet setback, 40-feet setback rule, as opposed to the previous one.
I would also to point out, there is a precedent for similar approvals, such as the case of a house at 250 Opitmon Road, which is a part of Milpitas as well, and that house is very, has a very small lot, and also they are very close to the street, and yet they were able to build, and so the setback, if you apply to that house, clearly they wouldn't be able to build their house there, so.
So, according to the planning department, they said that that piece of land is not part of the Hillside Combining Zone, because maybe in 1992, when it's come to existence, they've had a variance to be excluded from the combining, the Hillside Combining. So, in fact, that would be an exception to the rule for them since the start, because they know that with the piece of land, small size of the piece of land that they have, they won't be able to build anything if they are included in the Hillside Combining Zone. So, we have not, we don't have, we didn't have that chance to be excluded, and we didn't have, yeah, we didn't even know that we could do that. So, right now, after 25 years of living there, we finally had the means to build out a deck to have more room. The house, the current house is only 1,500 square feet, so we need to expand, and the expansion that would make most sense to us, not because of convenience, not because of anything else, but because we need the room, and we need the view, and we need to be able to use it every day, not, you know, get out of the house and get to the patio, get to a gazebo, which is small and limited, and get to wherever, to be able to enjoy, and, you know, to kind of have some room to move around. From a 1,500-square-feet home, there's not much room to, you know, to really be comfortable. So, we need the deck to maybe, in the morning, we just get out there, have some coffee and enjoy the view and exercise. Right now, we are exercising in the small patio that we have currently, but it's too small, so he exercises first, and then it will be my turn. We cannot do it together, because there's not room enough for the both of us, so we need to expand it, and other suggestions and that the department, the planning department suggested, doesn't help us, you know, enjoy all that, because it's, it doesn't make sense, and we can't use it.
So, we respectfully, you know, requesting your support in granting a setback variance for covered deck to, you know, for our property, based on those reasons.
We understand that the rules are there for a reason, but we understand that, and we believe that the new setback rules are to prevent new subdivisions to be too small, to avoid overcrowding of the hillside. We understand that, but we were not subdivided then. We were subdivided way back when there were not such a setback, so our land is not very favorable for any renovation or any enjoyment at all. And respectfully, I would request, we would request that any rules could have exceptions, if given the circumstances.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and comments.
Well, Vice Mayor, we do have one public comment on this item.
And I'm calling on anyone from the public on this item.
Voltaire Montemayor.
Thank you. Yeah, I heard the pleading and begging of the applicant and the presenter, kind of, at least the presenter is for all sides, but for the applicant, I'm touched. Maybe, I'm just comparing now, in some other countries, it will be okay, but maybe in Milpitas or in America, you have to follow those rules, but at least I heard that there's no public problem, I mean, around neighborhood, I would say, right? No problem. So, I think if it's really safe and no complaints, but I'm just, for I, the column, the conduct public hearing one anyway, the two and three and the resolution, there may be some contradictions, but I think we could study that good, and we should love one another, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor.
Thank you, and that's all the public comments we have, and I just maybe advise the applicants, and you can go ahead and take a seat, and the council will call on you if they have any additional questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, since there's no more public comment, we're closing. A public comment for a council discussion. Anyone from the council wish to make comments? Councilmember Lian.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, yes. So, let me understand this, you've been there, this is to the applicant, you've been there for twenty-five years and this is the deck, um, that you, you're requesting for? And you need the cover for that deck and staff recommended no cover or at least have it detached? Can I have staff to the podium, please? So according to the applicant, um, if there is no problem, and you said that this may be to the future, um, public, can you explain that more so that we can, at least for me to understand it?
Yeah, so essentially, all, um, although the current property owners don't have an issue with the project, uh, there is a possibility that future property owners and future neighbors would have an issue with that patio cover.
So is this looking up, this is the hillside, the hill views that we are protecting?
Correct.
Um, and this is a part of it that you're trying to protect?
Correct. It is on the lower end, uh, but it is within the hillside combining district.
Is there other alternatives that we can compromise and, um, given the fact that they've been there for twenty-five years?
Uh, if I may, councilmember Liang, um, to go back to the precedent question, I just want to elaborate a little bit further on the precedent. Um, we get requests for variances all the time. Uh, it's a very common request from all members of the public, from all areas regarding a variety of variance requests. Um, but variances are meant to be difficult to get because these are the rules we have in place and we have specific findings, five of them that are listed out, and the project must meet all of the five findings, not just one of them. Um, the reason why this is a concern for precedent is that, uh, we did not see any special circumstances in this situation. And if we were to, if the city were to approve this project, it would be very difficult in the future when we receive variances for anything else in any other location in the city, uh, to make a recommendation of denial when it would have a greater impact because the, the threshold and the findings that could be established through this project would be very low, um, lower than many other requests where we've actually encouraged the applicant to not apply because we didn't, we recommended that it was not worth even their time or the city's time to review such projects. Um, so my concern as a director of the, the city is that, um, this would open up possibilities for future variance requests, um, in the hillside, but also throughout the city. And, uh, if the threshold for the, like, for example, if this were to be approved and the threshold were to be brought as low as we believe it is for this project, then, um, there would be very, very few examples where we could possibly deny any variances.
I understand because, um, I remember last year I didn't support one of the property up in the hillside, um, with the, you know, strong belief that we need to protect and we need to share those view with eighty thousand other tenants or, you know, uh, property owners here in our city. Um, my comment is that they've been there twenty-five years. Um, if there's any other alternative, any adjustments, um, that they can still enjoy having a covered deck, um, but not to block any, anybody else's views. So.
And I, I think we heard some, um, I guess thoughts and arguments for the alternatives, our alternatives that staff had proposed. Um, the, the rear of the property is relatively flat and there can be a detached patio cover there. Um, there are also different ways to attach it, but even if the patio cover in the rear, in the flat area were to be detached, um, typically just having to exit your home and access a, a patio cover isn't, is more of an inconvenience, not a necessity or a substantial property right. So an example of a variance that, you know, would have more of a, um, uh, an argument would be, for example, a really undersized lot that's triangular in shape. If we were to apply our setbacks strictly in those situations because it's triangular, they would have almost no buildable area for the home. In this situation, the applicant can, can have a home. The applicant has areas where they can put a, a detached patio cover, um, because having a, attached patio cover is not necessarily, necessarily a substantial property, right? So there are alternatives, there are things that the applicant can still do to enjoy their property, although not exactly in the way that they would prefer. So even things like cost is typically not considered enough findings for a variance or else any project to really get approved because, you know, there's, there are always cost considerations.
Okay, thank you. Um, applicant, I, I hope that you can take this and see if you can sit down and work with staff to find an alternative that would fit with your needs.
Yeah, it's hard.
All right, can we, uh, reserve that, uh, in the end? Right. Okay, we will hear from you. Uh, let's hear first, uh, council discussion, please.
Yeah.
Let, let's finish the council discussion, then, uh, we'll group and, uh, hear from everyone.
Can we address what they just said first?
Uh, for now, let's hear council discussions and then, uh, we'll, we'll circle back to, to everyone. Anybody else? Councilmember Chua.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have slide nine, please.
Coming up. Is this the correct slide?
Yes. Uh, yeah, Director J, can you walk us through this really briefly for everybody? Before you do that, um, explain in one or two sentences what a variance is? Because I think that's the, that is the foundation of the issue that we're discussing here.
Thank you, um, councilmember Chua. The, uh, variance is a request to be granted an exception to our development standards due to a, to, to a physical development standard due to physical characteristics of the property. And to go through the table, uh, the project meets all the other standards except for this one, um, area, which is the side yard setback. Um, it, it's, the side yard setback is forty feet minimum and this request is to go all the way down to as close as five feet. So it's a pretty major deviation. What we also do for all other variances is even if there is a variation, a deviation request, we try to minimize that deviation as much as possible. Um, and we feel like this is not as much as possible. It's going as close as five feet from the property line. Um, the other issue is that the property is currently legally non-conforming. Not only is, are the variance findings not met, we would be going against our legal non-conforming regulations, which do not allow for expansions of non-conforming properties that make the non-conformity even worse. So that's another important aspect, I think, that we need to remember in considering this. Um, and whether or not even the applicant or the property owners, even staff, whether we agree with a forty-foot setback for the side, I don't think that's the matter at hand because that is what was established and voted on, um, by Measure J. And if we want to change, so if we do have a problem with that standard, the recommended process for going around that would be to go to the voters as required to modify the hillside ordinance. Um, so whether or not we agree with that standard, um, to me, we need to focus on whether this project meets the findings.
As you, as you're aware, that hillside ordinance, uh, got, uh, extended originally twenty years ago, it was approved by majority of the residents. And the last few years, it got, um, it got extended to another twenty years because we've been successful in implementing the hillside ordinance, which is the main objective is to preserve the hillside. If you drive on eight eighty, you could see, you know you're in Milpitas because you see the hillside. And if you go to Fremont, you know you're in Fremont because you see the houses. And that's one of the reasons why the residents, mm, really favored this hillside ordinance. And I, I can empathize with the, with the residents, with the applicants. But on the other hand, um, can I see the alternatives again? The three options? Uh, seventeen or sixteen, I think. There, the one before.
This one, this one.
This one. So the reason why you recommended install the deck without a roof is because?
Um, so, uh, a deck without a roof, um, per our code would be considered an accessory structure rather than an accessory building which has different side setbacks.
Is it attached to the main house?
I guess.
The, the deck?
Yes.
The current deck?
Yes.
So you're saying like if you add the covered, uh, the covering, it will be attached to the, to the house and it becomes an addition?
Right.
The reasoning?
Correct. It would trigger different setback requirements.
How much? How many feet?
Forty feet.
Oh.
Yeah, it would have to be in line with the development standards for, uh, the, the regular single-family home.
I see. So it, when you add the cover, the covering, it becomes, uh, additional structure to the main house, so the setback is forty feet?
Yes.
Gotcha. What about this number two?
Uh, so similarly, it would, uh, be considered an accessory structure, so it could also be, um, uh, proposed with as little as a three-foot side setback, uh, but it would have to be detached from the main house.
And the other ones that I heard the applicant, they really don't like, if you show, I think it's slide ten, where you showed the photography of the house highlighted in yellow? Around there, right, ten or eight or nine? Or maybe s-
Yeah, uh, should be slide.
There, this one.
Yeah.
So. So uncovered is okay, but once they cover it, it's not okay. It requires forty feet.
Correct.
Okay. And where, where did you say they can put another structure which they don't like? On the right side?
Yeah, it may be possible in the rear of the property, so this is an enlarged site plan. Um, Assistant City Manager Keno, if you could go to slide seven, that shows the enlarged site plan, yeah. That shows the full property line. So, uh, the rear of the property would be to the top of those images, um, where the slate is fairly flat.
Which one? Which part?
Um, to the top of, um, both of those images.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both. I think, uh, that's all for now. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Chua. Anybody else? Councilmember Lam?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, on this, uh, slide, uh, when you say the top of the house, um, but, uh, is, is this, um, does it join, uh, between the house and, uh, um, and the empty area, is that a patio? And then after that is all flat land?
Um, so I believe you're referring to the small rectangular appendage, uh, in the middle of the proposed area, so that's currently a sunroom, uh, so, and enclosed.
Not the sunroom, um, you're referring to top, uh, is one of the alternative, right?
Maybe, um, using directions would be better, so it would be to the, if you look at the north arrow, um, it would be to the north, and it would be in the northwest direction.
Yes, northwest direction, exactly. Um, the top of the house, is that pretty much flat or a slope?
That area is primarily flat. If you were to go to the northeast, so in this site plan to the right, that is where the slope, slopes up.
Okay.
But even with or without a slope, it's possible to have a deck and even a covered deck. Um, and another option is for, if there were to be a covered deck to the northwest, we understand that, you know, if there's a bedroom on that side, you, you wouldn't necessarily want to only have access through the bedroom, but there are ways to design the covered deck where it can wrap around on the northeast side and extend on that side because there is greater setback on that side already. And if there's any common area, you can have access right out of, through that common area and then, and then you'd be able to access the entire deck, um, without having to go through a bedroom. So we believe that's an, an alternative as well. But up to this point, the applicant has not given us specific reasons for why these other alternatives are infeasible, not necessarily undesir-, we understand, we sympathize, like, we always have an idea of what we'd want, but we, we want to see, we'd want to, we'd need to see that the alternatives are infeasible.
Yeah, yeah, appears to me, um, there's a loss of rooms, um, in the northwest directions. Um, and the staff has told us, uh, that piece of land is flat, so it's very visible to build a deck with a roof on top. Um, that could be an alternative, uh, for the applicant. Yeah, that's all I have for now.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Lam. I think I, I have, uh, some questions too. Uh, we heard the applicant, uh, regarding a supposedly grandfather setback, uh, how, can you comment on that? They said that, you know, it's been subdivided prior to this, uh, uh, zoning ordinance and there seems to be a claim of being grandfathered to the old one?
If I may, there are, um, many properties in the hillside area that were subdivided prior to the hillside ordinance, so many of them are, yeah, of a smaller size. Um, it's, if somebody were to subdivide today, then the size requirements would kick in. Um, so it, it isn't unique to just this property.
Vice Mayor, if I may, I think the applicant specifically was referencing two fifty Piedmont Road.
And that home is not in the hillside area.
So just to clarify from a legal perspective, um, two fifty Piedmont Road is not in the area that has been designated by the city and its ordinance as part of the hillside. Um, uh, to my knowledge, it has never been, um, but I cannot say that for sure certain. I don't believe that staff, um, who was asked about this, the plan commission identified any kind of a variance that was granted to that property. Um, it is the triangular property, um, that staff was talking about.
So, so way back, there was no, uh, ordinance or any rule with regards to setback when, uh, they acquired the property, whenever that was?
Oh, are you asking at the time the house was built, what the setbacks were?
Yes.
I see. Um, I think the difficulty is that because of the lack of building permits, right, we, we're not even sure exactly when the house was built, therefore it's difficult to know exactly what the setback was at the time. It's rare, but there are instances where there are no records or no building permits.
So, so what's the rule if you don't sign the law? Or, or we're gonna apply, uh, the new law? I, I'm, I'm just curious, you know, I'm, I'm trying to give everybody a fair shot. So if there is a, if we can find, if there's no rule at the time, uh, when this property was assumably subdivided, uh, and for those years they were allowed, never check, uh, setbacks of, uh, five, ten and eleven feet, uh, on the property, so what is the rule now? Are, are we going to impose a newer rule?
So any, any property, um, in the city regardless of, uh, whether we know what the standards are or not, uh, if they were to propose a change, um, significant enough, meaning like you're not just doing interior renovation, they'd all have to comply with our current standards. Um, and as it relates to uses, even those uses that, you know, maybe were allowed previously, if they want to expand the operations of their use, for example. if they want to expand the operations of their use, for example, like expand their hours of operation, they would also have to comply with today's standards. Because the changes in the zoning and the general plan are intended to phase out previous situations and push development towards the, the desired result of the zone changes. So even though we don't know for sure what the setback was at the time for this property, what we do know is that the change that they are proposing is, is an expansion of the property and therefore subject to, per our non-conforming regulations, subject to today's standards.
Right. And if you look, uh, at staff report, again, I'm just inquiring, you know, there's, uh, several tables within which, uh, this property is recommended a denial. The first one is the surrounding zoning and uses. I think this property is in an area where, uh, one housing every, uh, ten gross acres, a small one. Number two is, uh, you know, we, we look at, uh, general plan consistencies. And if you look at CD seven dash one, uh, the same consistency, right? It's word differently, but it relates, uh, to setback. If you look at our table number, uh, uh, three, with regards to developmental standards, same thing. Uh, they are in, uh, inconsistent with development standards because of, uh, the side, side yard setback. Further, you go to table four, uh, with regards to the hillside zoning ordinance. And, uh, again, uh, because of, uh, this side yard setback, uh, they seem to be inconsistent with, uh, the hillside zoning ordinance. So it all boils down to that, uh, side yard, right? And, uh, so, and if, you know, if we're so particular about the hillside zoning ordinance, I, I, I will read it. It says that, uh, interference, uh, with views and privacy, that's, uh, is consistency. There is a presentation that neither the, uh, the neighbor down, down the hill or up the hill has issues with, uh, uh, the proposed, uh, variance. So the question is, how would that, uh, you know, connect to our hillside zoning ordinance saying that there should be an avoidance of unreasonable interference with views and privacy? That's the first question. The second question, if you look at, at the same hillside ordinance, it says it may alter, uh, the, the view. Uh, one, uh, we know is it's one unit per ten acres. And, uh, so the second, uh, question I have is, do we have an aerial picture? You know, looking from, uh, eight eighty or looking from downstairs, does a, uh, does the requested variance, uh, would be significantly noticed, uh, from, from where we are standing right now?
So to answer the last component, um, if, it just depends on the angle. So, you know, it wouldn't be more visible from every angle. So if, I guess, if the elevation that was shown on the screen, if you are looking at it from, uh, south, I think southwest side, um, you know, it may not show as much, but if you look at it from the street as it goes up, from the, a side view, then you would see how it goes much closer to the property line. So it, it depends on which view you're looking at it from. But that, yeah, but that's just one of the many findings that we have to consider.
Okay, but most of the findings, uh, four of them, or five as you mentioned, is about the setback. And, you know, you, we fit them on, on the hillside ordinance, uh...
So one of the findings is related to impact, which I think you're getting at. Impact to the views and other things, but the other ones are related to granting a special privilege or taking away a substantial property right. For example, we had another, um, variance request, I think a couple of years ago now, where the request was to allow for a, a home to be visible at all near the crest line. That's a variance that staff was willing to support because if we were to not grant that variance, they would not be able to have a home or any structure on their property. Um, so that's an example of losing a substantial property right. Um, so in this situation, staff did not believe that the applicant would be losing a substantial property right. But that the project would just have to change and not be the original configuration and design that was desired. And in the hillside, the only variances we've, we've received that, in recent memory, is that one about the viewpoints. And then it's, this isn't even a variance, but it's really just, um, any ki- any time someone wants to propose different materials um, for the fence, other than, uh, wood or the approved materials, typically like metal, um, that's a, like a deviation request that we've received and brought to council as part of other, um, the bigger project.
Right, I, I'm mindful of the, uh, hillside ordinance. Actually, I, I wrote the ballot, uh, statement on that, uh, when we renewed it on, uh, uh, for another twenty years, and I, I still vividly, uh, uh, remember, uh, the spirit of hillside, that is, uh, to preserve, uh, the hillside and as, and enjoy it, uh, you know, as they are now. Uh, but I'm also mindful of, uh, development. Alright. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Chua?
Thank you Vice Mayor. I have a question. You mentioned that the current property is non-conforming. Is that true?
Yes.
Non-conforming to the, the new, um, hillside ordinance, I mean, the new, the, the current one?
Yes, the setbacks.
If they, let's say, they're okay with adding, uh, I mean, doing one of your suggestions, are they obligated to conform the rest of the structure to the, because she said the current structure is not conforming. Are, is, is there, in the ordinance, are they required to conform in addition to, uh, one of your alternatives if they do wanted to do that? That's a concern for me now.
No, that's, that's a good question. Per our non-conforming regulations, only the new portion must comply with the new standards. So we would not require the rest of the home to be brought into compliance.
That's good to know. Thank you, thank you so much.
Seeing no more comments, uh, what's the council's, uh... Alright, okay, uh, with Councilmember Chua's, uh, request, uh... Oh, okay.
Um, there are two points that we'd like to, um, counter. First, the, um, the locations suggested by the planning, uh, department. Um, the detached location in the back, in the northeast location, and detached. Um... It makes sense in terms of, uh, rules and regulations, uh, to avoid the setback, um, variance. But in terms of, um, um... Everyday usage and whether things make sense to us or not, um, whether we're gonna enjoy it or not, um, it, it, uh, the answer is not. Um, with a detached, um, structure in the back, just to avoid, uh, the variance, there are two problems. First, the, um, the usage that we won't get to use every day, so it's, it doesn't make sense to us. It's useless to us. Secondly, um, with the, the meat, the, the spirit of the zoning ordinance is to avoid obstructions of the view from the public. If we extend another huge structure in the back, if you take a look at the, um, the, the picture again, um, right now, the house is only that short. Now, if we add another structure in the back, that would present more obstruction in terms of view from the, the street. So, uh, even though it doesn't encroach upon the, um, the setback, but it would be an obstruction, more additional obstruction, more visible. Whereas with extending the, the, um, the depth of, of, of the current, um, deck with the car, with the, uh, roof, if you look from the angle from the street, from south or southwest, you know, it's, um, vi- visually, if you look at something in front of you, whether it's closer to you or further to you, it doesn't affect your, your vision, your view at all. It doesn't change your view. You don't see that depth. You don't see the thickness of the house. Now you add some, you say add some five feet to it, it doesn't make any difference. So in terms of obstruction, it doesn't change anything for the public. The only thing that the new, the new construction would encroach upon is the zoning. And if, if it means for, um, for the city to, um, to hang on to it, to protect, um, the view of, of, of the, the, of the hillside, then giving the variance won't be, um, detrimental to that, to that zoning rule at all. Because it doesn't change the view, it doesn't obstruct the view, it doesn't affect the hillside view overall. Because we are so low, low, um, down, um, to, to make any change.
And if we were to actually change the location of the covered deck to the back, as shown earlier, you can see that so on that picture now is on, on the left, left-hand side. Um, basically, the rule, the forty setback requirements will still apply to that. That means the deck is gonna be, have to be pushed in against the hillside for the forty-foot setback requirements to be satisfied. So, and again, just like she said, you, all of a sudden now you add another structure there. If we talk about in terms of the, uh, the, 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 the view, now you add another structure there as opposed to keeping the structure as one consistent block with the house. And now it's just now that you extend the roof out to the deck, and that's the only change that we would like to make. So that, that, that would be our, our argument.
Yeah, and the second point that they, um, the, the planning department raised was to set a precedent for maybe other future residents would, would base on that to ask for more variances. We don't know what the future holds. Like, like we didn't know that in the future, uh, after we bought the house, that the setback would be increased to forty feet from five feet. Um, what we wanted to build some, uh, the deck since after we, we bought the house, so we looked up the, the setbacks and we looked up the hillside zoning rules, uh, back then. Um, we just didn't realize that in ninety-two, the new zoning rule would extend it to forty feet. So, um, after that, knowing that we couldn't build anything then, we didn't look at it anymore. So we didn't know until currently, when we decided to go ahead with the plan, that we, we learned that it's forty feet now. So, um, uh, what was my point? Sorry, sorry. Um, the, the precedence, um, and then the, it, it does encroach, it, it does take away from our, uh, privileges. Um, because, given all the circumstances that restrict our, um, um, renovation, our extension, uh, expansion, uh, plans, um, it's, uh... Uh, I don't know what that's to say, it's...
I mean, exceptions are made to, 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 um-
I mean, rules are made to, uh, well-
The, the, I mean, we have variance so that we can address extraordinary situation as such. Otherwise, you know, we, we wouldn't ask for variance, we don't need variances in, anywhere. And I think that's the point where, when the last time we presented to the, uh, Planning Commission, and there was some discussion, and they finally agreed that, yeah, uh, if anything, uh, if nobody's around us, seem to have an issue, to complain, and from a side, from the, the viewpoint of the street, there's no, no obstruction, then I think why can't we make it simple for Milvettans to, to make a change? Basically, to, to, you know-
Well, point taken, point taken.
The variance, I mean, the variance that we asked for is in accordance to the hillside zoning spirit, which is to preserve the hillside view from the, for the public, which we don't, we don't do, we don't obstruct it any further than that. We, although, anything besides that is all regulations and rules and that, that could be, um, given, uh, exceptions to.
Alright, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just one question to the staff. So one of the recommendations is to, uh, they can put a, some sort of a temporary structure similar, because it is governed by a different rule?
Um, one of the alternatives is you could have a covered, or you could have a deck in the same location, um, but without a cover or, you know, a, a non-permanent type of cover, that could be taken like, like an umbrella, other forms of shade, that's an option. Um, and I also wanted to make a point about the detached patio cover option in the rear. It would only have to be six feet away from the main home. So even if somebody were to, even if the applicants were to have to leave the home to get to the covered deck, it would only be a six-foot walk. So we're not talking about the incon- inconvenience of having to navigate hills to get to a covered deck that's like, you know, many feet away.
So in the second option, if they put a twenty-foot umbrella, that would be fine?
Yes.
Even if you can see it down here?
Yes, but our understanding was that, that was not, um, desirable for the applicant.
It's a hypothetical question, because if the spirit indeed is to protect the hillsides from, uh, uh, a variance on it looks, if they put a twenty-foot umbrella, keep it there for five years, it would be fine?
Not, well, twenty feet in height, or it's like?
No, same, same, uh, uh, measurement as what they are proposing to have a variance with. So technically, uh, if, uh, they put a temporary one, same structure, same height, same length, as long as temporary, the rules allow it?
I think it'd be difficult to have a temporary structure of that size.
That's right, it's a hypothetical, only-
It's a hypothetical, yes.
Thing is, uh, you know, if the spirit of the hillside is to protect it from a different drawing, let's call it that, right? And we don't allow, uh, something that is, uh, uh, attached, but we allow something that may be detached, that may be semi-permanent, and then we can see it downstairs. Is, is that an option for them?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
Right, so, uh, we are, uh, you know, we are discussing about, uh, their application for variance, because it's detached twenty-foot and it's going to obstruct privacy and whatnot, right? And, uh, as, uh, there is a, a possible option for them to have a, some sort of a temporary cover on a patio that is not permanent. And that was my hypothetical, if you put twenty-foot tarpaulin with the same side, it's fine.
And to clarify, even just the discussion about, uh, what's temporary or not, even allowing some sort of a temporary structure is an interpretation that is trying to be as maximally flexible as possible, but a stricter interpretation could certainly be to not even allow temporary structures. Um, but I think to kind of get to the question that we're discussing, uh, even if we may not agree that the standards make sense, because the difference between a covered structure or a non-covered structure may not seem clear, uh, to the public, we just, that is what the standard is. So we just try to uphold what the standard is, and then if it doesn't meet that standard, then they have to meet the variance findings, only one of which is public impact. So even if there was an argument to say that there is no impact, there are four other findings that need to be met, and we don't believe they've met those four other findings.
I know, I'm, I'm following, uh, the presentation. One, uh, the variance should be denied because under the rules, uh, it cannot be done, right? You said five. But the same, uh, rules allow for a different kind of structure. As your option number two. My, my point is, you know, one rule says that, hey, you cannot attach this, you cannot make a permanent structure, uh, and with the setbacks, but, uh, the same rules allow for- but, uh, the same rules allow for temporary ones. And if you look at those two rules, uh, both of them are different. One allows one, the other allow, uh, does not allow the other. But if you look at, at the effect of both rules, you can see it from down in Milpitas. My point is if one, if you're denying this variance because of the dreaded precedent that I'm hearing and because there's rules, the other, uh, uh, side of that, uh, argument is why is, does the same rule allow these temporary structures? Even if you say that, you know, there's no, uh, uh, such thing as semi-permanent, but you know, the, the same rules that we're imposing uh, in, in trying to, uh, see if the variance is approved or not, allows a structure that's not attached?
I guess maybe to restate is, the rules do not necessarily allow for a temporary structure the way that is being described. Um, I think the original question is like, can we have an umbrella covering over a table? Like, and that's a different question than all the hypotheticals that we can explore. Um, in the end, a lot of that comes down to interpretation. Like, we can try to figure out different scenarios for what's temporary or not and different types of temporary structures. But the rule itself does not speak on whether temporary structures are permanent or not. It's an interpretation if we want to be flexible. And our option number two was never to have a temporary structure cover. It was just to have an uncovered patio.
Oh, there's three. Uncovered, one is, and the third. No, because I thought I heard that, you know, the second option, uh, there's a rule on it. So you're telling me that there's no rule?
At, at the Planning Commission, the, the discussion went towards creative solutions or questions, hypotheticals to see what's the most that could be done in, in keeping with the law. Um, but those are things that staff has to analyze. I mean, th- these are all interpretations and we can write it down in a policy memo if needed. But I think simply put, the, the only thing I can say from the code itself is uncovered is treated differently than covered. So I, I, I don't know if it's really worth, or I don't know how much value we get in trying to figure out like all these different options that we, as staff, never proposed. It was just a question that came up.
One is it's worth it. You know, you're talking about property price, so it's worth, uh, discussing it. So here's another, here's the question I, 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 I seek answer from. Is there a rule different from, uh, what, uh, we are trying to impose on denying the variance that allows the same structure, whether you call it permanent or not? Is there a rule? Can, can they do something other than a, an untouch? Same location, same width, same length? Will the, the rule allow it in any form?
It has to be uncovered.
Right. And that's what the rule says. It should be uncovered.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, I think, uh, I think the three of us, Councilmember Lee and my, Vice Mayor and myself, came from the Planning Commission. And Planning 101, we learned that what is variance 101. Variance is really given because of physical limitation, not because of a view, not because it's something else. It's very basic. It boils down to the structure, the way, the way the land is shaped. So if it does not conform to this, if it does not comply with the ordinance, then that's the answer. That's all. I want, I sympathize, please, with the, with the applicants because they've lived in Milpitas for a long time. But there are reasons why we have ordinances. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor.
Oh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, just one comment to the applicants. Um, what I hear from the staff is there are multiple alternative. Perhaps, uh, you might want to adjust your plan a little bit to fit into the current, um, guidelines or hu- hillside, uh, ordinance. Seems like there are other solutions that is, uh, um, you might get similar, it's not exactly the same, but similar, um, view as, as you desire. So you might want to discuss this further with the staff to, um, to come up with solutions. Yeah, I, I also sympathize with, uh, with the owner, but a rule is a rule.
Thank you, Councilmember Lam. So what is, uh, the pleasure of the council? Any motions? Or any, uh, further discussions? Councilmember Chua?
Motion to approve, approve the recommendation of staff on item thirteen as stated on the agenda.
Any second? Councilmember Lam?
Yeah, I second that.
Thank you. Now for, uh, the vote?
Yes. The vo- the motion was made by Councilmember Chua and seconded by Councilmember Lam. Vice Mayor Barbadillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lam?
Aye.
Councilmember Liang?
Nay.
There is three votes in favor, one vote against by Councilmember Liang. The vote passes.
Thank you. Right now we go to, uh, item number fourteen. Madam, uh, City Manager?
Item number fourteen is for the council to consider approval of Hall Park Court Priority Use and Program Plan. And in this case, it's the conversion of two, of two of the four Hall Park tennis courts to six pickleball courts.
Thank you, um, Madam City Manager. Now calling on our Able Recreation and Community Services Director, Renee Lawrenson.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council members. We are here tonight to consider the approval of Hall Park Priority Use and Program Plan. Next slide. This evening, we'll be going over a little bit of a background on the site and the project, community outreach and feedback, assessments of the area, current service levels as far as court usage goes, recommendation considerations, our fiscal impact, and then final recommendation for the evening. Next slide. So as you may recall, in 2021, the Recreation and Park Master Plan, which is a strategic document that serves as our planning blueprint to improve, protect and expand our network of parks, facilities and services for the future, was updated. Community response as part of that project plan development did call for the consideration and installation, um, and further expansion of pickleball in Milpitas. In March of 2022, City Council approved and directed staff to implement a pilot pickleball program at the Gill Handball Courts and Hall Park Tennis Courts. In April of twenty-three, City Council adopted as part of their twenty-four, twenty-eight capital improvement program, a new park improvement project, which was CIP five-one-one-six, pickleball improvements. The total budget for that CIP project was a hundred thousand. Next slide. In March of 2024, staff presented an analysis of the pilot program and made recommend, recommendations to City Council for reconfiguring the Hall Park Court system, which would take it from four permanent courts, uh, of tennis to two permanent tennis courts and six permanent pickleball courts. With that recommendation, we suggested that the city install sound dampening panels on the fence and add fencing between the two sport court areas for player safety. Uh, at that meeting, staff received direction to change the Hall Park Courts closure time from ten PM to nine PM, install the sound dampening panels at the Hall Park Courts, and install the safety fence. Following that direction, staff changed the court open hours in April of twenty-four. We completed the installation of the safety fencing in September of twenty-four and finished the installation of the sound panels in mid-November of 2024. Next slide, please. We're gonna move on to community outreach. Um, just want to say implementing new programs and new types of uses and existing parks and facilities is a thoughtful process. It is challenging when, when trying to address the needs of resident park amenity users, our park neighbors and their quality of life and the residents at large. Overall, staff has hosted three community public meetings and two focus groups and from 2023 to now. Um, you can see on the screen between September twenty-fifth and April twenty-ninth, um, we have hosted meetings or focus groups with a cumulative amount of about two-hundred-and-ninety-two, um, people attending. Next slide. We have also conducted four community surveys, seeking feedback from Hall Park users and Hall Park neighbors. Surveys number one and two were done in twenty-three and twenty-four. Those provided valuable feedback on the rates of visitation to tennis courts and pickleball courts throughout Milpitas, the wait times at those sites, peak uses, impacts to the neighborhood and receptiveness to changes to the Hall Court priority uses. Results of survey number three provided comments on the player experience as to the safety fencing, sound panels and the new court closure time of nine PM. Survey number three was done after the improvements were made to Hall Park and after the City Council direction. Uh, the cumulative percentage of resident response to surveys one, two and three, the average was sixty-four percent resident response, with the assumed the rest being non-resident. Next slide. Survey number four, that was promoted to the immediate park neighbors next to Hall Park, which was approximately a hundred-and-fifty homes, hoping to get feedback on the effectiveness of the sound panels and the reduction of court hours. We did not get the response that we would have liked to have seen, so we extended the survey by two weeks. We also put together a focus group, which was held on April twenty-ninth. Um, and that was a meeting with immediate Hall Park neighbors to review their perspective on the effectiveness of the improvements of that court system. That focus group did have representation from three total households on La Honda and one on Pescadero. Next slide, please. Moving on to the community feedback, these are a few results from the recent surveys that we did. Um, for both, we did two separate surveys, one for the neighborhood and one for court users. Both surveys included a question that was in general, what amenities do you participate in when you go to Hall Park? So the, this, the square on your left is the neighborhood survey. The neighborhood, they enjoy picnic areas, playgrounds. They had a strong response to other. That was walking their dogs and enjoying just socialization in the park. On your right, you've got the responses from the court user surveys. There was a strong response for pickleball and tennis and also the playgrounds at Hall Park. Next slide. This represents, uh, information that we received back from court, court users. They were most satisfied with the sound dampening panels. They were least satisfied with the court closure at nine PM. We also asked them to rank the impact of the court improvements from top impact to least impact. Um, they did rank the safety fence as their top. Sound panels was second and the time change was third. I do want to mention when it comes to the safety fence, we did receive feedback in the written comments from court users that the safety fence alignment would need to be reconsidered. It is encroaching into the tennis area of play. So depending on the feedback and direction we get from, to City Council tonight, we would make some adjustments to the safety fence. Next slide. Our neighbors reported the most satisfaction with the courts closing early at nine PM. The sound dampening panels received a high number of neutral responses, but the write-in responses did ask, uh, focused on two things. One was asking for more dampening panels to be added to the fences. The other was an expression of dissatisfaction with the panels overall. They felt they were not as effective as, um, they thought they would be. The focus group neighbor concerns, that was the April twenty-ninth meeting that we held, they really expressed concern over the capacity of the park long-term with the high amount of use with the pickleball sport being played on site. There was also conversation around community noise. The noise from the courts itself, from playing the game, but also after the socialization at the cars. Um, many of the cars are parked in front of their houses and those conversations were seen as disruptive to, um, the, the peace that they want to experience inside of their homes. They also shared that court use during closed hours is still happening. Uh, courts open at seven and are closed at nine. People are getting in before seven and playing, um, and then, um, going in after nine and playing. That is not a, uh, an experience specific to Milpitas. It's happening in courts all over. Um, we had some issues at some other courts, which seemed to have been dialed back, but, um, we did want to note that as a comment from our focus group that they were concerned about the, the hours at the, the courts. Next slide. We did a traffic assessment in 2024. Uh, we engaged our traffic engineering team. They placed speed trailers on La Honda going westbound and Hermena going southbound from May, uh, excuse me, April eighth to May sixth. Um, just to refresh everyone, if you haven't been out there, the speed limit on La Honda and Hermena is twenty-five miles per hour. The average speed of cars on La Honda was twenty-six-point-nine-one miles, mile per hour and Hermena was twenty-point-oh-four. You'll see on the graph, um, it shows the numbers on the side, zero to fifty. That is the average daily car count that was going down La Honda as far as this chart shows. And then it shows the time of day. So you'll see three colors on the bottom, red violators, yellow inside threshold and green is compliant. Compliant means they were, um, at or under twenty-five miles per hour. Yellow means that they were somewhere within twenty-five miles plus ten hours, so within thirty-five miles per hour. And the red, which you see at the top of an eight o'clock hour, um, is somebody that went over thirty-five miles per hour. So what's, um, interesting is how fast people are going, of course, but also the higher amount of cars at different times during the day. You can see people leaving for work around seven AM, the violator leaving and going very fast at the eight o'clock hour and then, uh, the highest bank of cars coming through at about five o'clock down the Honda on this week. Next slide. Uh, Traffic Engineering also did, oh, you know what? Yes, leave it here. Hall Park, they did an assessment of Hall Park. So just to get you familiar with existing conditions, um, Hall Park does have a parking lot. It has a total of ten parking stalls. This parking lot also provides access to our, one of our storm pump facilities. One of the city sandbags area, sandbag area is also off the parking lot. Um, street, uh, excuse me, Traffic Engineering did note that street parking is inefficient on La Honda, specifically on the southbound side of the street, which is the street that flanks the park itself. Um, they did say that, or comment that public street parking in and around the park is sufficient for the, the park usage and the recent activation, um, at the park. We did reach out to, uh, pub, the police department. We did ask about any parking citations. That was one of the concerns that we received from the neighbors. So between March first, twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five, Milpitas Police received thirteen calls for service. Um, three were for abandoned vehicles, six were for illegal parkers and four were for sus- suspicious vehicles. One car was towed. Seven were either not sighted because, um, it didn't meet that criteria. They were moved. Two were marked for tow, one was sighted and then two of the cars, they weren't able to locate. In addition to that, eleven officer-initiated events, um, occurred. That's if, uh, police officers or resource officers are out in the area. They noted nine abandoned vehicles. They, um, issued one parking citation and then one suspicious vehicle. So that's, um, uh, one year, thirteen-month time, timeframe. Next slide. So with the parking assessment that our traffic engineering team did, they did have two recommendations. One was to red curb the Hall Park parking lot for emergency vehicles. That's something that's not existing right now, but would need to, um, be painted. Um, you see it on... You see it on the southeast part of the parking lot. We did receive a question about the hash marked in the parking lot. That is access to the pump station with a vector truck. So they do need a wide area to get the the vector truck in and out in emergencies. They also recommend painting tandem parking lines to help the public park better along La Honda on the south side. You can see the the white parking stalls along your screen here. That would provide 18 efficiently parked cars along this street and help alleviate some of the inefficient parking and potentially illegal illegal parking along the street. Next slide. Staff also conducted decibel level readings. We identified 16 locations in and around Hall Park, Hall Park. This was either close proximity or complaints that we'd received regarding the noise. What staff did to take these decibel readings was first, we would go to the courts. We would count the number of active players, get an estimation of the waiting players. Then when they would go to each station, each 16, they would spend 10 to 15 minutes there. They would note one if they could hear pickleball from where they were. Then they would take several decibel readings of general noise, and then a decibel reading at the point of impact from paddle to ball, sort of the highest impact noise. And then they would move on to the next site and the next site and the next site. We did that October 30th through November 7th before the sound panels were installed. And then we went back February 11th through February 21st and did this again. So just give an example, if you look at the green, there's real no shape name for that, but if you look at the green where Hall Park Hall Park is at, you see Station 1 and 2. So I'm going to give you a little bit of idea of how how this looked before and after the sound panels. So at Station 1, which is at the playground area, on Friday, November 1st, at 7:00 P.M., staff went out. They noted 24 people playing and 10 people waiting. General noise at the park at that time was 74.5 decibels. They did note that pickleball was out there. There was soccer out there. Playground was activated, people in the field. So it was it was a busy night. On impact of paddle to ball, decibel levels were 88.8. Then it took them four minutes to get from Station 1 to Station 2, which is on La Honda. When they did the same exercise, general noise at La Honda registered a 58.3 decibel level, and then on point of impact, it was 64 decibel level. February 10th, which was a Monday night, they went back. I selected February 10th because we had 24 people playing and we had 13 people waiting. So we wanted to make sure we had the same amount of people in the courts for comparison. At Station 1, the general noise registered a 61.9 decibel level, and at point of impact paddle to ball, they registered a 67.3. And then when they took four minutes to get from Station 1 to Station 2, they registered a general 53.7 decibel level and a point of impact of 63. So they did this for all the 16 stations for several days throughout those few weeks to get the data. Overall, general results showed a reduction of decibel levels ranging from 12% to 24% through the 16 stations. The most decibel reduction was shown in areas closest to the park. Next slide, please. So currently, we want to go over the court inventory right now for everyone. So we have 24 outdoor permanent tennis courts at various city parks. They're at Brown Park, Serrano Park, Dixon Landing, Maguire, Gill Hall, Pinewood, and Evitt. We have 14 temporary pickleball courts. Eight outdoor are at Gill Park and Hall Park. Brown courts have very old pickleball lines from seven years ago, probably even more. Those are not counted as inventory. When city council provided direction to staff to move on with the pilot program, we were told that those court lines would need to be removed eventually. So we're not counting those in the count right now. We also have six indoor temporary pickleball courts at the Milpitas Sports Center. Pickleball courts are available for drop-in, two to three days per week. There's morning and evening sessions. The two to three days depends on the season and some other sports in play. But that is your round. Next slide, please. As part of the 2021 Park and Rec Master Plan, it did have some charts about where Milpitas is as far as it's, are we reaching National Recreation Park Association guidelines and standards for facilities available for our residents? So currently, tennis court services in Milpitas exceed NRPA guidelines and average standards in comparable cities. Outdoor outdoor pickleball courts, excuse me, serviced in Milpitas are not yet measurable by NRPA. I checked last week. Do they have standards? They don't have them yet. But what the Parks and Rec Master Plan did was, because there was not an NRPA standard, they used the average standard in comparable cities. Based on Milpitas' projected population in 2040, which is 113,530, tennis courts should be increased by one court for a total of 26 courts by 2040. And outdoor pickleball courts should total eight courts currently to meet current population demands, and increased by four courts for a total of 12 courts by 2040. Go to the next slide, please. This is the the table that's in the Parks and Rec Master Plan. You see the two orange highlighted. We have our tennis courts. NRPA guidelines right now are one court for every 6,242 residents. You slide over, you'll see Milpitas' existing level of service, which currently is one court for every 3,368 residents. Our consultants recommended our own guideline to be one court for every 4,300 residents. So if that's the standard for the current population, we're fine right now. But by 2040, we would need to add one more court, which would be 26 courts. I want to point out that we have two less tennis courts right now because pickleball is on two of the Hall Courts right now. So if that remains, then we would need three additional courts by the end of 2040. Our outdoor pickleball courts, sorry, sorry, Matt. Our outdoor pickleball courts currently, there is no NRPA standard. Average standard using comparable agencies is one pickleball court, excuse me, one outdoor pickleball court for every 22,341 people. Right now, Milpitas' service level is around one court for every 14,000 people. The guideline that's proposed in our master plan is to get to one court for every 11,000 people. So the current population, as we are today, it recommends two courts. We currently have eight outdoor temporary courts. But by 2040, it recommends that we consider getting to 12 outdoor courts to meet our growing population. Next slide. Recommendation, consideration. So many communities in the country, in California, in the Bay Area, they're facing similar scenarios as Milpitas. They're having the same conversation that we're having tonight. Cities are converting existing sport courts, tennis courts, basketball courts to dedicated pickleball courts. They're creating new courts as well. Cities like San Francisco, Morgan Hill, Walnut Creek, Dublin, Cupertino, and Sunnyvale are all are all in the same boat that Milpitas is. So tonight, we are asking the city council to consider creating a dual priority use court system at Hall Park Courts, which would have two tennis courts and six pickleball courts. We are asking for a consideration of additional site improvements to continue to address the sound, parking, and some site program that we think is necessary at the courts long-term. The site improvements would be adding additional sound dampening panels and fence reinforcement, painting tandem parking stalls on the south side of La Honda Drive for more efficient and increased public street parking, and painting red the red curb on the Hall Park parking lot, because we need to be able to have emergency vehicles come in and park. Next slide. Program improvements at the site. We do want to and need to update court signage. We also feel there's a need to implement court use queuing systems. And in consideration of the neighbors, we are proposing a limited-term neighbor assistance program for households in close proximity to Hall Park. This program would support eligible residents with minor window treatments to reduce court noise in their homes, homes that met a specific distance and noise level. They would qualify for one-time funding to purchase sound dampening curtains or window inserts for a limited number of windows in their home. Next slide, please. There is currently $68,000 remaining in CIP 5116. That's the original $100,000 that was budgeted. We estimate an additional $100,000 would be needed to complete the improvements to Hall Park Courts, along with the program improvements with city council direction tonight. If it, if you so choose, staff will include the proposed adjustments to the CIP 5116 project budget as part of the annual CIP schedule for a total project budget of $200,000. Next slide, please. So we're at recommendation. So tonight for the consideration discussion is to approve the conversion of two of the four Hall Park tennis courts to six pickleball courts and direct staff on proposed site improvements. That's the end of the presentation. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Director Lawrence. Opening the item for a public comment. Let's be reminded that we have a minute to express our thoughts on this issue in respect to the other speakers.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have 11 comment cards. If anybody else is not that wants to speak, has not submitted a comment card yet, can you please give it to Director Lawrence? Thank you. I'll call up two speakers at a time. The first speaker, Van Leong, and second speaker, Prashant Kumar. Just come, you have one minute, and I'll start the clock when you start speaking.
Ready? Okay. Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council. My name is Van Leong. I am the president of the Milpitas Pickleball Club and 30-year resident of Milpitas. On behalf of myself and the member who cannot be here tonight, I'd like to thank the city council for your continued support from the launching of the pilot program three years ago to the recent court resurfacing and the sound barrier. Your effort transformed Hall Park from an underused space to vibrant hub for thriving pickleball community. Today, Hall Park welcomes over 1,000 players every week from senior working adults and even the Milpitas High School Pickleball Club, play there every day, every week. Come to play, stay active, relieve stress, and also build social connections. Thank you, Van.
Thank you. Next, Prashant Kumar, and then Suji Maniam.
Hi, Vice Mayor and council members, Parks and Recreation, and hello, neighbors. I'm Prashant Kumar, and I'm a proud resident of Milpitas for the past 15 years. I wanted to extend my heartfelt thanks first of all to the city of Milpitas for launching the pickleball pilot program in 2022. I didn't know about this sport until they started that pilot program. And fostering the inclusive, active community spaces. I especially appreciate how the Parks and Recreation Team facilitated the Hall Park focus groups, which brought residents together to collaborate and address concerns constructively. Living adjacent to Hall Memorial Park, I experienced firsthand the impact of the pandemic on personal health and well-being. At the age of 50, despite my love for sport, I struggled to maintain fitness. Thanks to this pilot program, I was able to, and the Milpitas pickleball community, I was able to encourage and learn and play. What began a way of active quickly turned into a daily practice.
Thank you, Pram. Suji.
Thank you. Suji Maniam, and then Akshaj.
Good evening, council members. My name is Suji Maniam. I lived in Milpitas for 15 years. I'm going to keep this brief because I know we are running late. On a personal note, playing pickleball has been really tremendous for me, not just from a health perspective, but also, you know, people I met, friendships I built. We all know pickleball is very popular in Milpitas, especially at Hall. And and you heard the proposal, and I really want to thank city council and Parks and Rec Department, especially Renee, for navigating this issue and your support. So you heard the proposal, and I really urge you to vote yes, to make pickleball permanent at Hall Park. And I know that there are a lot of people waiting, so I'm going to yield my time. So again, thank you for your support. More pickleball. Yay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And Akshaj, looks like is not present any longer. So I have Arjav Jain, and then Melissa Pereira. Arjav? No, okay. So Melissa Pereira, and then Malia Toy.
Hi. Good evening, council members and Vice Mayor. My name is Melissa Pereira. I've been a resident in Milpitas for over 40 years. This pickleball pilot at Hall Memorial Park has done real damage, not just to the park, but to the people who live around it. We've spoken up again and again, emails, meetings, public comments. We even put together our own petition of the 40 households that live around the park. But nothing's changed. This isn't about anti-recreation. We want people to come and enjoy. We think Milpitas deserves to thrive, to have parks that bring people together and build community. The spirit has been lost here. This pilot has created conflict, not connection. There's illegal parking, trash on our sidewalks, and no street cleaning. And with no staff on site, there's no one to help when things go wrong. Other cities are listening, and we would implore you, this pilot has failed. Don't make it permanent. Find a better location and give us back peace, safety, and true sense of community. For all those thousand people that are coming through our neighborhood every week, where are they parking? There is soccer happening. There are other activities that people want to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Melissa.
Thank you. Next, we have Malia Toy, and then the initials KS.
Hello, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Malia Toy, and I am secretary of the Milpitas High School Pickleball Club. Our club plays on Fridays at Hall Memorial Park each week, and we need more pickleball courts because our club often runs out of space and we can't play pickleball sometimes because other people are taking up the courts at the time. And I have been a member of the pickleball club since freshman year, and I've watched the club grow here. And so in the future, we are, we will need more space for our club to play pickleball. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Malia. KS.
Hi, my name is KS. I would like the city council to consider a few issues that are observed while considering approval of this conversions project. I think Renee has brought out a few issues on the survey that shows conversions is not encouraged. Noise, parking, fancy shoe, and safety. So insufficient parking issues at Hall Park is still yet to be resolved and is causing a lot of inconvenience, especially to the nearby residents. The conversions will also attract more non-residents, which already has the case, while the park should be enjoyed by Milpitas residents. The increase of pickleball crowd also brings safety concerns for neighborhood and also for tennis and pickleball player. Just a few weeks ago, I have I have heard incidents happen between tennis and pickleball player that triggered the police enforcement. Cities should find another venue for pickleball instead of conversions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next two speakers are June Viswanadam and Ben Zhang.
Okay, thank you for having me. And thank you for Van Leong for allowing me to speak to all of you. So I've been playing pickleball for a few summers now, and time and time again, the pickleball club has provided me with a safe and positive environment. And they have been able to connect me to many peers and adults who have guided me as a player. And there are many people who feel the same as me, which brings up the issue that we have less courts than we need. Because people who come to play, most of their time is spent on simply just waiting for a court and waiting for a chance to play. So like many others, I advocate to open more courts for pickleball so that everyone has a memorable memorable experience like me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Vice President, Vice Mayor and Council. So my name is Ben, and I would like to thank the Milpitas Pickleball Club for providing me with the community where I can play pickleball, have fun, and also build connections. I think Milpitas Pickleball Club is a great community because it promotes exercise, sports, and also social connections. And like others, I would also like to advocate for more pickleball courts so that more people can play at the same time and less players have to wait. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben.
The next two speakers are Vikas S. and Henry Sung. Vikas here, yes. Vikas here? Yes.
Greetings, Vice Mayor, Council members, and the staff. My name is Vikas. I have been a Milpitas resident for 15-plus years. The parking noise and code user issues were never an issue for the residents prior to pickleball courts were added to the Hall Park. In September 2024, a safety fence was added between the tennis and pickleball courts, but a large section was left open. This gap has led people crossing during active tennis games, causing disruptions, verbal abuse, and even safety concerns. Worse, the fence was placed just three feet away from the second tennis courts. With tennis being a fast-paced sport, several players have already been injured chasing balls near the fence. Though the fence was meant to help, it has caused more issues and has made the second court nearly unusable for an effective play. We need to preserve our tennis courts. I urge the city to build a separate pickleball facility rather than modifying existing spaces and risking public safety and community harmony. Thank you.
Thank you, Vikas. Henry?
Hey, good evening, Council. Henry Song again. Last year's community survey result at the, at the big community meeting at the community center, the one conclusion from that result is that the non-residents were overwhelmingly driving the demand for pickleball in Milpitas. Yes, there are residents who would love to play, but not at the expense in which residents that are living directly across the street are affected by the noise and the excessive parking and the confrontations of those who are parking illegally. You can look at the residents who have just testified to you that the challenge is overwhelming and that they simply can't even do something as simple as putting their trash out until closer to midnight, just so that the pickleball players would vacate. Look at what Renee is asking you to do to taking the extraordinary steps to subsidize for better windows or better curtains. I mean, if this is not around, trying to fit a round hole into a square peg, I don't know what is. Yes, we should, we should all love for some sort of recreational priority, but do it somewhere where it doesn't antagonize your neighbors and residents.
Thank you, Henry.
Three more speakers. The next two, Steven Ballsba, Voltaire Montemayor, and then Gino Ricampagos. So Steve Ballsba, then Voltaire Montemayor, and then Gino Ricampagos.
Good evening, everyone. Steven Ballsba, 55-year-old resident in Milpitas and a USA Pickleball Ambassador for, for Milpitas. There's a, I support the need to convert those two courts for six pickleball courts. That's the best solution based upon current situation. Pickleball needs more than what's available, and residents around that park have a valid need also. So there needs to be some planning. This is not a 2040 solution. But with all due respect, those numbers are way off. You know, they could fill 12 courts today, not in 2040. And once again, the residents have a real need and you need to come up with a plan. There's a, there's a site in Milpitas that could meet all these needs right now and it's owned by the city. You just need to, to plan. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Voltaire?
Voltaire Montemayor. I live close to that area, that hall. And I just swung by this afternoon. Yeah, I saw players, mostly pickleball. Anyway, that's not, my point is like, I thank the city and all, being understanding, being cooperative to all. And we know that the city is doing their best, its best, to help us, especially that kind of a sport. So yeah, I heard the speakers. And the city is really trying to improve and organize it good for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor.
We have Gino Ricampagos.
Good evening, City Council, Renee. My name is Gino Ricampagos. I've been a Milpitas resident for the last 30-plus years. Just want to thank you all for, for the efforts that you've put in in improving our courts, pickleball courts, putting sound barriers, resurfacing everything. As residents, we really appreciate that. And we think it's a great opportunity for us to meet fellow residents within the area. Ever since COVID, everyone's been working from home and there really is no opportunity to meet others within our community and to get exercise too. So whether it be meeting people from different ages, older, younger, it's just a great community to meet other residents. And we'd never have that opportunity without that venue. And it's also, we also think it's a great opportunity to kind of improve the city, get people to come into our city. We have people coming from other neighboring cities just to play with their friends who live in the city and patronize our companies. Thank you.
We have one more. Kimberly?
Hi. Good evening. I am a Hall Park resident and the neighbor, the neighborhood is tired of not being heard. We've lost faith in the city's commitment to incorporating our feedback and making meaningful changes. You can see that it took all the way until November to install sound panels. It took six weeks just to change the time to 9:00 PM, which is what, like turning off lights? People are just tired now. They've given up. Our neighbors have said, oh, what's the point? Like, why do we go to meetings? Why do we do surveys anymore? They're not going to do anything anyways. And clearly after over a year, there's no evidence that the staff has genuinely pursued any alternatives other than our park. They brought up the idea of drawing tandem parking lines in the focus group and we shared how useless it would be, and that's still the recommendation. So like, who are they doing this for? Like, our driveway gets blocked regularly. So like, I'll just call the cops every time now if I know that's being counted as a number. So yeah, I urge the council to not make decisions swayed by the loudest voices or the largest numbers. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kimberly. Anybody else?
That's all the speaker cards that I have, Vice Mayor.
Thank you for closing now the public hearing. Now let's go to the council discussions. Any comments to the council? While we wait for council members, other council members, here's my, my comment, right? It's not about tennis residents versus pickleball or vice versa. I think what's going on is there is a, a new, growing sports that is being loved and accommodated by the community. And the issue is where is placement? And so far, what we've heard are different views, not disfavoring pickleball, but you know, the, the things surrounding pickleball is the issue. I hear traffic, I hear noises, I hear garbage. On the other side, I hear, you know, playing pickleball does improve health, both physically and mentally, and I haven't heard anything against pickleball. What I'm hearing is a possibility of working together, how everybody would compromise to put pickleball in Milpitas. I, I do understand, right, as the, the thoughts about traffic, but we did reach out. Yeah, here's, here's the thing about trying to gather public comments, right? We did have a, a survey and unfortunately, there are less, I think, one out of, correct me, Renee, out of 50 respondents or there's 150 emails sent and there's only a few that responded. We won't know what your thoughts are if we don't hear. If only you can come here at the night of the decision, expounding your views, whether it's pro or not, give us a feedback. And the way that we, we, we hear you is through the efforts of the Recreation Department. Providing assistance, trying to resurface, trying to, to temper the decibels on the court is not really an admission that pickleball is something that, that's detrimental. It is an effort for us to balance both pickleball and residents of the whole community. So we continue to work and I believe that, you know, from the get-go, from two, three, two years ago was the pilot program?
2022, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, almost three years ago, we have learned, right? And, and if you tell me that no, either voice was not heard during those long three years and I, I, I disagree to believe that. Thoughts has been floated. The prior decisions about pickleball has been enunciated in this council and I think we're proceeding forward. So with this item, you know, we, we always try to balance it. We let's continue to work together, but one thing is sure on this situation, pickleball is in Milpitas. So let's work together. That's my thoughts. Anybody else from the council? Councilmember Lam?
Yes. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yeah, I hear similar things as the Vice Mayor said. I hear pros and cons. Pickleball definitely is becoming very popular in the United States, but at the same time, we need to have a balance between noises, parking, and traffics. And those are very disturbance, especially for the people who live nearby. We, you know, I wish the city and perhaps pickleball associations can work with some independent enterprise to build indoor pickleball court that might solve some of the issues like Bemington. Lots of Bemington courts are all indoors and we have facility within Milpitas. So we need to look into alternative. Pickleball definitely has a great noises for the resident. I've been there at the Hall Park and even a couple blocks away, I can hear the noise. It is a issues and also as one of the resident mansion, there are, we are attracting other residents from other cities to come to Milpitas. So that increases the traffics and also our residents may not have wait that long with those outside residents. There are pros and cons and I think we are not ready to make any decisions today and we need to find balance, especially solving the noise first. Yeah, the, the noise and the traffic is a, is an issue for residents.
Thank you, Councilmember Lam. Councilmember Chua?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Renee, Director Renee, can you please address some of the concerns of the residents? Hold on.
Sorry, go ahead.
One concern is safety. I mean, do we have statistics on, on petty crimes over around that area?
I don't have any data on park crimes inside of the park. I'm not sure if Chief Hernandez has anything. We do hear about personal conflicts between players. Most are resolved at the lowest level. I'm not familiar with anyone, I'm not familiar with the police having to be called out to the court. Sometimes they share with me, sometimes they don't, but I'm not aware of anything in specific to crimes in, in.
Do we have any in other parks that we have out of the 30, 35-plus parks that we have? Do, do you, do we know any stat on those?
What my department hears most about is conflict when there is a picnic rental and somebody tries to get a table beforehand. And, and sometimes there's, there's disagreements there, but if Chief has anything he'd like to add?
Good evening, Council and community. Jared Hernandez, serving as your police chief. I don't have specific numbers, but I can tell you that we do occasionally respond to parks for different crimes, vandalism, fights, drinking in public, those types of things. I cannot stand here in front of you and say that any of it's attributed specifically to pickleball without looking directly at the numbers. To echo Director Lorenson, there are occasional arguments that happen between people at the park that want to use it for different purposes. Maybe somebody feels like the other's taking too long, those types of situations. When it comes to safety, one of the things that I heard one of the community members say had to do also with physical safety, playing because of the condition of the court. So I think we might need clarification from the community members. When they speak of safety, are they meaning safety from crime? Are they meaning safety from how the facility is designed?
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Another question I have for you, Director Renee. The issue about this, I think Mr. Vikas said this, the issue between the fence closer to the tennis courts, what is that issue?
So the, the tennis courts that are out there now are designed for doubles. And so the safety fencing where it's placed right now, it is in, not a tennis player, in the alleyway of their, their playing area. So when they go for a ball on the tennis court, the, the safety fence is encroaching in their area of play. So if we are going to move forward and keep both sports on the courts, we would want to work on the design and the layout of the courts and a safety fence to make sure that it's not interrupting any areas of play for either sport.
So there is a mitigating, we can mitigate it. I mean, we can do something about.
Yeah, we would work to mitigate that issue so that both sports have safe areas to play.
Okay. The next one is, I think this is from Mr. Lee, Henry Lee. This issue came up a while back when you brought up pickleball in front of the council last year. And it's just throwing their garbage. They have to wait midnight because people are staring parks and your cars are parked. And I remember Councilmember Dan asking the, the pickleball players to please, you know,
Right.
give the residents space to throw away. Do you remember that?
Yeah, we, we have heard from the residents that in the effort to park cars on the public street, that neighbors weren't able to put their garbage cans out when they would like to the night before pickup. There have been, I believe, I've received a couple of reports where their garbage cans are out and somebody moves them so that they can park their car. That is, that is a concern. And when we had the focus group on April 29th, that, that account came up again. But that was something that they were concerned with, that there was lack of neighborliness with people that were trying to park at the park. Whether they, what they were there to use the park for, I can't speak to that. There's a lot of different uses at the park, but that was a concern of the neighbors across the street from the park.
Is there a way we can do signage and say for this, I don't know, maybe talk with transportation for signage?
Yeah, that's a good question. We could work with traffic engineering in addition to the, into the garbage. We could work with traffic engineering in addition to the, into the garbage cans. You know, the rate of use of the park is increased and so there is street sweeping, I believe, on this street. So there were some concerns there. So those are issues that we could take to traffic engineering and see what solutions we could come up with.
Our neighbors Fremont just built a lot of pickleball courts. And then San Jose did to Beriasa area. Do you see any decrease in usage because of those courts? I mean, those courts being built around us?
I understand from all city court systems that people travel from court system to court system. You know, Milpitas residents go into San Jose and Fremont and vice versa as an example, San Jose, et cetera. There's residents of ours and residents of theirs playing on all the court systems. I can't speak to a marked decrease or increase with the installation of the new courts. I do know that non-residents that have taken surveys before are, some of them are close to, I think it's Cataldi Park is the one in San Jose that you're speaking about. So some of them are near that. They're gonna go where their friends are, so that's a big factor. But we don't have any data to show that it's increased or stayed the same with the installation of those new courts.
Okay. I think that's all I heard from our residents. Yeah, that's all I have for now. Thank you, Director Renee.
So I'm going back to my comments from probably a year and a half ago or two years ago. As I said, each one of us have a desire of our sport. And I believe staff works really, really hard to come up with this proposal, to come to us. And to comment on Steve's comment. If it was that easy to put out twelve courts for the pickleball, I'm sure Renee would do that. We don't have the space and it is not that simple. So let's, I guess one thing that I would really ask from the pickleball player is to be respectful with the neighbors around the courts so that we don't bother them. Let them have their peace and quiet. And, you know, don't go in the court when it's not the time and don't stay after hours. And don't park illegally. And so help us so that we can help you have your courts so that you can play and enjoy your sports. So that's my comment.
Councilmember Lam?
Okay, thank you Vice Mayor. There are a few Milpitas High students pick up. And Renee, you might want to work with MUSD, see whether Milpitas High School has space to build pickleball court over there. So it doesn't occupy our other pickleball players.
Thank you, Councilmember Lam. We have broached the subject with the school district at the possibility, because they do have a pickleball club on site. We've also approached private business owner areas where land looked flat and a good spot to, to put pickleball courts. In addition to businesses that specialize in pickleball inside with dining experience as well. So we have made and we're not done making those efforts because there is an expressed need for additional pickleball courts. So those efforts will continue. And thank you for that comment and we'll continue to work with other agencies and look at other areas where we could add both pickleball and what our plan says, we need a few more tennis courts as well. So we'll continue those efforts.
Thank you, Councilmember Lam. Councilmember Chua?
Thank you, I just have one quick question. Mr. Balzba mentioned about ideal location for pickleball. Where is it? Did you, you mentioned about there is a place in Milpitas, ideal for pickleball. Where is it?
Yes, okay, all right. Yeah, Councilmember, the idea that Mr. Balzba has shared is that Dixon Landing Park is another park location that staff should look at for future pickleball courts.
Thank you, thank you both.
Thank you, Councilmember. Just a question or two. So in other court system in neighboring cities, you see it standard that tennis courts are converted to pickleball courts?
Yeah, thank you. No, I think tennis courts are often looked at as a court system to share the shape, net systems, the areas of play and the lines are different. But if you look at the way a court system for tennis is set up, you can fit pickleball on it. People, excuse me, not people, agencies are converting basketball courts in the same way. So you have dual use of basketball and pickleball as well. Some court systems, if there's two uses, they have different programming hours or different assigned days of play. But we do see more often than not tennis courts being either converted or turned into dual use.
So where did we get the idea of converting tennis courts?
The converting tennis courts, looking at other cities and what their response is to community advocacy for the addition of pickleball courts. We also had a strong advocate group in Milpitas that came to City Council and proposed that that was, that's one way to add more courts. Additionally, in the Parks and Rec Master Plan, that also suggested that a lower cost option for adding pickleball court is to use existing facilities which include tennis.
All right. So we're trying to end the pilot program now. Why, in your thoughts, why you think we need to go, move forward? You know, we have two years of experience as a council member. Leon said, you know, we've heard similar issues a year, a year and a half ago. Why is there a need to move forward and convert Hall Park?
So Hall Park, just as a reminder, Hall Park is one of the areas that the Parks and Rec Master Plan called out as a good location to add the pickleball courts to. The pilot as it is right now includes two tennis courts that have two series of lines painted on them. There's pluses and minuses to that. It maximizes space, but also too many lines get a little bit confusing for players. But we have tennis nets that are not being used. And then we have portable pickleball nets that are replaced because of wind. We all know about Milpitas' wind that comes through. Just the overall use and reuse of the portable net systems are somewhat of a challenge. I think when it's permanent, then you've got standard rules. There's ability to put in additional programming infrastructure like the queuing system. I think also from the pickleball perspective, they are a sport that wants a home just like other sports in Milpitas, like basketball, a baseball field, a softball field, a tennis court.
All right, so if we formalize Hall Park, then we can innovate on queuing system? The gate, the sports becomes more organized? More, how will I say that? It's more manageable? Okay, hold on, our call, okay.
Yeah, that's one of them.
And we've learned that throughout the years of the pilot. At least we figured that out.
Yes, we figured that out, yes, yes.
So with regards to, so we've heard several times about traffic and safety and it's generalized. And we don't have any data to suggest that safety or traffic is a concern in Hall Park?
So the traffic on the streets, that is part of the traffic study that we did. So it shows an average number of cars that are going down the main entryways to the, to Hall Park, which is La Honda and Hermena. Hermena car counts are higher. It's also one of the main roads that people use to pick up their children from Kertner School. Soccer is out there, picnic rentals are out there. Just depends on how you're trying to get to the park. You're trying to go over there at a certain time of day. You are gonna go around the neighborhood and then go down Hermena to get to Kertner School or the park, or even people trying to get home for the day. But actual increases to the traffic, we measured as of April of last year, after we received direction from City Council and heard feedback from the community. But speeding, the average speed is not grossly over the posted speed limit. I think there is an increase in cars on the streets because there's new use. The park is activated in a different way and the parking.
So does that validate the concern about parking, that study? There's some multiple factors as to affect, you know, the numbers of cars, speeds. But does that affect, you know, does that validate the concerns of the communities surrounding Hall Park? That pickleball does indeed increase traffic and safety?
I think it increased traffic and has created more seekers of parking along the streets. I cannot speak to safety. I don't know that the increased use of a park system makes it unsafe. But I do think that we can say that increased activation of a park would create more vehicular traffic, bike traffic and pedestrian traffic.
All right, aside from the vicinity streets and the dedicated ten parking lots, where else can a possible player park as far as walking distance is concerned?
All of the streets around Hall Park are public, are public parking. So there's opportunities for public parking on all of the streets around the park. We know in general that people will walk a quarter mile to get somewhere. Sometimes people, when they're gonna go work out, they don't wanna walk as far. But there are a number of streets around the park that are public parking and which is why traffic engineering didn't feel that an additional parking lot was necessary. There's also Kertner Elementary School, which has a parking lot. People could park there and walk to the court systems. It is a little bit farther than trying to find parking nearest the court, but that is additional parking lot space.
Yeah, so I agree with Councilmember Chua. I think signage would also help, you know. When I was in a certain place, I see ten signs, right? And it just got to me that, hey, this is something that I need to do or it learned me by visual. So and another one is echoed by Councilmember Leon, it's about respect. You know, we are all sports-loving, whether you're playing pickleball or, you know, you're enjoying your peace at home. We believe mutual respect is given, right? We encourage players and visitors of that park to be mindful of the neighbors and be mindful, you know, it's basics and elementary. Pick up your trash if that's a concern. For the city's side, let's just put up more trash bins. Maybe something like that to compromise and then feed an emerging activity like pickleball. Thank you. Anything else from the council? Councilmember Chua?
Thank you Vice Mayor. Renee, Director Renee. How much do you really take to do a study for the Dixon, Dixon Park? To do a study for best use of that park intended for pickleball? We're doing the budget, so I'm trying.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. I don't know that I could pull a number. Yeah, out of my, yeah.
Get some funds.
I don't have a number. I think that's something that we could work out and bring to a meeting in the future. I will say that we are looking at Dixon Landing Park for other uses associated with youth softball. So we would not, we would want to make sure that we're giving both uses its due look, if council wanted us to do that.
Like you said, pickleball is really trying to find a home. And if Dixon Landing is ideal, I would suggest, I mean, just initial thought for me, is to do a study. If it's gonna be multipurpose, you know, we need to find a home for pickleball. And maybe that's a good one. I don't know until we do the study. I didn't realize when I introduced and initiated this pickleball pilot program that's gonna be, we learned a lot. We, I mean, it's good feedback from the residents and hard work from the staff, you and Matt and the whole team. We learn a lot. But I think now, getting the feedback and learning from the two years of pilot, we still need to learn more, how to mitigate these issues. And I think the best solution is to have a permanent pickleball home. And that's where I'm coming from. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Chua. Councilmember Lam?
Yes, yeah, I also want to echo what I said before. I'd like the staff to investigate for indoor pickleball court. There are lots of warehouses. Perhaps we could find a home in the, one of those warehouses. And also see whether you have any business partner to partner with so we don't have to use our general funds.
Hey, Councilmember Lam, Matt Kane over here. Yeah, we will, we definitely continue to look for private entities to have pickleball courts in Milpitas and indoor locations. We have been, our economic development team and Renee have been doing that over the past year and so that will continue. There have been a few entities that they have spoken to. I don't know that anything has panned out yet, but that will continue.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure, on this item fourteen, are you looking for council's approval or council directions on certain items? Is very weak on number fourteen?
We, the recommendation is written is to approve the conversion of two of the four tennis courts to six pickleball courts and direct staff on proposed site improvements. Those site improvements are the addition of additional sound panels to close the north fence. There's a section of this fence that's not, that doesn't have sound panels right now. We're also asking for direction on painting the tandem parking stalls on the south side of La Honda to create more efficient and increased public street parking. And then the red curbing of Hall Park parking lot for emergency vehicle parking. Additional funds if allocated would allow for updated court signage, a court use queuing system and a limited term neighborhood assistance program for immediate households that are experiencing the most decibels related to the different use of the court system.
Okay. For me, I would approve the rest of the item. For me, I would approve the rest of the item, except making the six pickleball court permanent. Yeah, I, I rather continue with the current system instead of the permanent pickleball court. I like the idea of the queuing system. And I'd like to see more sun panel to put up. And then I want to see some isolation between the tennis court and the pickleball court. Yeah.
Council member, could I just seek clarification on that motion? Yes.
Yes.
Could I speak, seek some staff clarification on that motion? Would you, would you, when, when you say you don't want permanent, would you, would, are you supporting still keeping pickleball out there for now, but just not permanent net installation?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm, I'm hearing, let's implement the mitigation issues. And then further observe. And then I was going to look here for the CIP budget. We are recommending the budget be set at $200,000. What we'll do is from here to next week is we'll, we'll, we'll put a, just a financial plug in there for beginning the study. We'll do a quick assessment. But we will see that as part of the CIP recommended line item in the budget. Is that, yeah?
Council member Chua?
So I would just ask the motion to include that. Is that, that's my final comment.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
So I second that.
All right, is it clear, Mr. City Attorney, the motion and the second?
So, so as the city manager, as long as there is a, a study, immediate study, part of the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, to, to not only look at Dixon Landing, but also, like council member Lam said, a, an indoor pickleball. And I can think of one, but we can talk about that later. But that would be good. I think we really need a permanent home for pickleball, you know. And, oh, go ahead. And I'm good.
Right.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And can we lump that? I, I think the CIP is for conversion. So can, can we do that motion and then piggyback, you know, study on, on different areas? Or we can do that separately?
If I'm capturing the proposal that the city manager made, then it would be, the motion would simply be to approve staff to move forward with the mitigation measures specified in the staff report. And the direct, direct staff to bring forward in the budget, CIP budget proposal of $100,000, proposed, but in addition, an amount for further study. And then particularly council saying that further study is both for other measures and particularly the permanent implementation of this course as well as alternatives. Is that, am I capturing that correct? Indoor and outdoor?
Indoor and, and also I think Vice Mayor included the signing.
We can put that in there as well.
Make sure it's included in the motion. Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
And I apologize, but it's just one more quick, quick clarification that the six courts, I, I'm, what I'm hearing, it would be striped for pickleball, but the nets would remain portable nets, so that they're not permanent nets.
That's correct.
Okay, so just to restate the motion so it's clear and making sure that matches council member Lam, what your motion is. You're moving to implement the mitigation measures as, as indicated in the staff report with the addition of, of signage and directing staff to bring forward in the CIP budget, not only the $100,000 proposed, but also a proposal for further study as indicated.
Correct.
And then council member Chua, were you, someone seconded? Okay, so then council member Chua is the second to that motion.
Thank you. And we vote?
Vice Mayor Barbara Deal?
Aye.
Council member Chua?
Aye.
Council member Lam?
Aye.
Council member Leon?
Aye.
The vote passes with all in favor and one absent.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. So we have one more? Thank you, one more. Right, so it's the ten o'clock rule?
No, it's eleven.
Okay. I'm trapped.
I was ready for the ten o'clock.
Yes, Matt? Yes, Assistant City Manager Matt?
So the next item is to review the list of a new, of new work plan item requests from individual council members and provide direction to staff through the council-approved prioritization process. And we have a brief presentation from Matt.
Thank you, city manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, thank you very much. I'll give a very brief presentation, and then we can always go back for more if you have questions. We've had a process since 2021 to receive direction from city council for requests that would then come back to a regular city council meeting on a regular basis for prioritization. Through this process, the city council has looked at over approximately 200 requests over the past four-ish years. Their last quarterly prioritization process was how, I'm sorry, council approved the policy for this process on January tenth, 2023. And the last time we're in front of you for our quarterly process was January twenty-first, 2025. And so the items that we're bringing forward to you today are those items that you've raised during the announcements portion of a city council meeting since January twenty-first, 2025. We categorize, categorize items in four different groups. Group one are those items that have not yet been initiated and require more than four hours of staff time and are not part of our work plan at this time. There's only two items in that category today. There's, group two are other new items that you've raised, but they align with what staff is working on and they require less than four hours of staff work. There's six items in front of you today, and those items are already recommended to move forward. And then group three items are the remaining items that, that are on the spreadsheet in the attachment that we've already been working on from past prioritization sessions. And then group four is a table of completed or postponed items that have, you know, that we keep, keep tabulating and never delete anything. So the, the table just keeps growing for completed or postponed items over the last four years. New items that have, that we're either already working on or planning on working on that are under four hours of work time that have been raised since January 2025. The community concert choir. This, although it is over four hours of work time, we did, we did receive direction during the budget study session recent, earlier this month to fund this, and so we're considering this approved and moving forward, assuming you adopted in the budget on June third. The Boy Scouts presentation of the colors and flags. Code of Conduct revisions for electronic device usage. An informational memo on capital project cost containment and evaluation of overtimes and reserves. So again, those five bullet point items are currently planned to move forward or are already being worked on. There's four items that have been completed since the last update. The bingo license for the Recreation and Community Services Senior Center and senior, and our senior trip program. HR presentation of the city council on recruitment and staffing. Our implementation of a hiring freeze and our exploration of a property purchase on Main Street. Two, there's two items that are up for prioritization this evening. The first one is the review of the bingo ordinance, which was raised by the vice mayor. We do have a bingo ordinance, which you heard in front of, at your city council meeting on April first, I think it was, when you approved our third bingo license in the city of Milpitas for the Milpitas Senior Center. If this item proceeds and is prioritized, we would appreciate any feat, or like any feedback on, are there any specific changes that you would like to see to the ordinance? And/or any change, specific changes that you would like to see regarding our enforcement and oversight of this bingo ordinance within the city of Milpitas? The second new item that is up for prioritization this evening was also recommended by the vice mayor. Consideration, consider the support of a policy or program regarding fentanyl. In 2024, our fire department did issue a report indicating that Milpitas is currently experiencing, experiencing less than the average opioid overdose incidence per 100,000 population. Where opioid deaths in Milpitas per 100,000 population are trending at 8.79 per year in comparison to San Francisco, as an example, at 54.79 per year. Our fire and police department, based on that this being prioritized in the past, last year this was also a priority item, have implemented more proactive protocols. If this does proceed through prioritization, we'd like any clarification this evening. If there's any specific programmatic or communications enhancements that the city council would like us to consider, such as coordinating more thoroughly with the school district and communicating to, more thoroughly to our residents. And/or are there any ordinance or regulations that the city council would like us to consider? Our recommendation this evening is to provide any feedback you have on any of the items that we're already working on, in addition to confirm that you're comfortable moving forward with the two new items, the bingo ordinance and the fentanyl on the prioritization list. Typically, at this meeting, we have between five and 10 or more items that are over four hours work that are up for prioritization. So we go through a process, round one, round two, et cetera, of voting. And we always end up with at least two or three new priorities. Since there's only two priorities this evening, we're just recommending that you do a regular roll call vote to confirm if you are supportive of moving both of them forward, in addition to providing us any feedback that you may have. With that concludes our presentation, and we're here for any questions you may have.
Council member Leon?
Yes, so city clerk, Matt.
Yes.
You changed your title today, so I have to.
That was.
I don't see the April thirtieth as Black April.
Thank you. So that is a, yes, so that is, we did receive direction to approve, to include that in the proposed budget. And so when we come forward to you on June third with the proposed budget, it, it will be in our staff recommendations to include. Just from a technicality standpoint, it wasn't raised during the announcements after a city council meeting, which is why it wasn't kicked to this process.
Got it.
So it is going, it, we are planning on putting that, per your direction at the study session, in the proposed budget that you'll see on June third.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, if, if you'd like to provide us any feedback on items, you can, or we can seek feedback after tonight's meeting. And if there's no additional feedback tonight, we would just ask that you proceed to a vote on whether or not you support adding these two items to the work plan. One thing I did want to add is if there's ordinance work involved, we do have a backlog of ordinance right now, and so we wouldn't be able to get to these right away, but we would add them to our work plan.
And if I may, just procedurally, it may make most sense to vote on if these two items should continue order forward, and then council could decide what feedback to provide. Obviously, if something's not going to be prioritized, then feedback is unnecessary.
Council member Chua?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. City Attorney, we already have an ordinance for, for bingo. What is this new ordinance? I don't, I don't understand.
So as I understood, the, the prior request for prioritization by the vice mayor was not a new ordinance, but improvements to the current ordinance. That is further study of the existing ordinance with an eye towards if it could be updated for best practices, particularly, I think, when the item was raised in relation to transparency and enforcement. That's what I recall, the, the item being asked for prioritization.
Is really, we update the ordinance if there's an issue? What is the issue?
So I believe that when I heard vice, the vice mayor's proposal, it was simply to study if there was available room for improvements and then to bring back any proposals for improvement to the council for consideration. So the prioritization item is whether or not the city should further study that ordinance.
I'll speak to that briefly. This is the third bingo license that we issued since the onset in, I believe, 2016. When, in 2016, through an application of a bingo license, the bingo ordinance was enacted by the then council. The, as, as we learn and as I've heard, I believe we need more transparency and oversight as the bingo, bingo is, is growing. There's, we want to make sure that, you know, it is a bingo for fun and bingo for public benefit, as enunciated in that ordinance. We have an, indeed, it is our chief of police that was entrusted for enforcement and oversight. Just that. I, I want to see if there's more of a, a, an oversight we can do with current and possible bingo licenses in the future. Now, it involves a lot of revenues. And that, that's my thought. I, I want to see if everything is good, because in the near future, we will be expecting several more licenses. And as I said, the pioneer bingo ordinance that we had was catered way back through an application of the first bingo licensee.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Lam?
Yes, thank you. I really don't understand this item yet. It's very confusing. Do we need to make decision today?
It's the pleasure of the council. I believe the item is just to look at it for further study. If there is a need to enhance it, revise it, or keep it as it is. It's just that the number of licenses is growing.
I, I, I'd like to defer that decisions. Yeah, I.
So just, just very quickly, by, by way of process. So the question today would be whether or not to prioritize that and therefore to give direction to staff to begin working on. If you don't prioritize that, and Matt, you can speak to this, it would then simply go back onto the unprioritized item list, and council could later by later vote prioritize it if it's so wished.
Thank you. And if it doesn't get prioritized this evening, we would likely bring it back at the next quarterly update for consideration.
To prioritize or not?
Right.
Okay. Thank you, council member Lam. And briefly too, with the fentanyl, right? So in late last year, there's two California legislation regarding fentanyl and opioid, dangerous drugs. And in December, there was this emergency ordinance by San Francisco with regards to fentanyl as well. We were, or I was, a brief with statistics in Milpitas. Indeed, there was a decline since 2024. And I, I, I think the reason for me coming on not only fentanyl, but opioids and dangerous drugs is because I see this as a regional effort and a state effort. If there is some movement in the state, there's some movement in neighboring cities. I believe the, the efforts are to make sure that fentanyl and opioids does not have I believe the, the efforts are to make sure that fentanyl and opioids does not have any space in, in the region. So I'm, I'm looking for, not necessarily ordinance at this point, I'm looking for more programs or, or policies to make sure that we are in congruence with other cities in the state, in making sure that opioids and fentanyl does not come to our city.
Yep, I apologize, I want to clarify something. So per our policy, if something is not prioritized this evening, it could come back in the next prioritization session, but a council member would have to bring it up again during the announcement section of a City Council meeting, so.
Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Chu.
Do we, do we do this one, one, one item at a time to make it clearer?
Yes, that would be preferable.
Right.
So if you want, if you want to call for a consensus vote, we could do that, Vice Mayor, beginning with the, beginning with the bingo license item, whether or not it should be prioritized?
Mine's aye.
Councilmember Chua?
I'll defer that one.
That's a, that's a nay. Thank you. Councilmember Lam?
I defer that nay.
Nay. Councilmember Leanne?
Nay.
So that item fails. The next one is fentanyl, and we're going to go with Vice Mayor Barbara Diaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lam?
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne?
Aye.
And that item passes.
So then I believe what staff could use is if there's any additional feedback on the fentanyl item or direction as we go to further study of, of what council would like us to focus efforts into.
EBD?
Right, I, I think as I, as I shared, the, my thoughts is a shared responsibility and effort with other cities and the state legislature in making sure that the world for fentanyl and opioids are very, very limited in Melpitas. As I said, I, I do not know if that caters for an ordinance or it caters for a more stringent policy or program. That's my, my thought for now.
And I apologize, it's an out of order for the, for the timing, but we forgot to take public comment.
Any public comment? Mr. Montemayor?
Everybody's very patient, so I'm patient also. Oh, well, good process. So I, the reminder of Vice Mayor, Mayor, that's good, I like that. And yeah, I followed through the presentation of uh, yeah.
Assistant City Clerk.
Assistant City Manager. Yeah, I think all good, to me, it's all good. It's really well organized, and I, I salute to you all, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor, as always.
Sorry, and then we can go back to feedback. I apologize for that interruption.
All right, any other feedback? All the council members? I think no more further feedback. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, unless, I think we, we took the roll call vote, right, City Attorney? So I think we're good, or do we need?
Yes, you, you can close the item and move on. I was just checking to make sure that staff didn't need any more feedback.
No, good, thank you.
All right, now we are down to announcements and, and future agendas. Any announcement, staff?
I just want to thank the council for your patience tonight. We had a lot of last minute staffing changes, as well as just issues that came up, and Matt ended up in the hot seat over here, and just thank you for, for your patience for today's meeting. And I think the Vice Mayor did a great job.
Oh, thank you. But I, I wasn't trained on adjournment, so, so not yet. Any other announcement? Councilmember Lam?
Uh, yes, actually, I want to make sure on, on the pickleball motions, we are not changing the time, right? The, the current time is still at nine? Okay, okay. No changes on that. Yeah, you know, because I, I didn't mention the time. So I just want to make sure there's no change.
There will be no change.
Okay.
Anybody else? Thank you, thank you, ma'am. And so how we like to adjourn? Is it adjourned?
Sir, Vice Mayor, isn't there?
Hold on.
Sorry, one, one.
All right, we're good. Thank you, Leanne.
Thank you, thank you. You did great.
Oh, thank you.